Adrianne Brightfield, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, August 18th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in the historic
4 of Indian Hills in the city of Dubuque, Iowa. Emily and Scott McGuire property at 1195 Arrowhead Drive for September 2nd, 2025.
Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for August 18th, And second is Rustic Point Park Development Project, initiate public improvement bidding 2025. process and setting public hearing for September 2nd, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio
Mr. Mayor.
and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings
Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium
for September 2nd, 2025.
Second by Sprank.
when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak
Got a motion by Russell and a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
to. Resnick. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank. access code that appear on the broadcast and live stream and posted on the front page
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh. of the meeting agenda.
Aye.
Wethel. This option includes audio input and written chat input.
Aye.
Russell. Aye. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in That motion passes 7-0. We'll move on to boards and commissions. We have the mayor's selection of appointments to the Civil Service Commission and appointments to the Building Code Advisory and Appeal Board and the Housing Commission. the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Well, first up is the Civil Service Commission, so I do want to point out here that, just
If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during
so everybody knows what's happening, that I am going to be making a selection or a
the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address.
statement of who I choose to, who I plan to appoint to the Civil Service Commission
Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from
today, and then the City Council will be voting on these appointments on the, at
the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's
the October 6th meeting, according to city codes, or I'm sorry, state code. So, we have two openings here and we have six applicants, so I just want to thank everyone
Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting.
who, who applied for this. This is a tough one, when you have to make these decisions by yourself as the mayor,
Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here. so I hope that, who I do not choose tonight, that you will come back and be a part of
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
this process again, and maybe even look at other boards and commissions, that would
Here.
Russell.
Here.
be a possibility.
Sprank.
I really do appreciate the fact that people are stepping up to serve in this way, and
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
to have so many applicants for this particular, for this particular commission is a, is
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
a really impressive one, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
So my intention is to appoint Otto Kruger and Julie Bakinsted to the, to the Civil Service Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for
Commission, and we'll put that before the council on October 6th.
which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So thanks again to everyone who is, who stepped up. So next up is the appointments for, for, actually, one appointment for the Building
Next are consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss
Code Advisory and Appeal Board, so this is one three-year term through January 1st,
one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is
2027, and here we have one applicant, Nathan Wardle, so I would entertain a motion, please.
any in-person input and state your name and address.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or
I move to nominate Nathan Wardle for the Building Advisory Code and Appeal Board
state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual
for a one-year term through January 1st, 2027.
input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the
Second. So we've got a motion by Russell and a second by Jones to appoint Nathan Wardle
speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion
to the Building Code Advisory Appeal Board. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 1 through 3 of the agenda. Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Adrian.
Sprank.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Aye.
Do we have any of the consent items that would, anyone would like to remove from the
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
agenda this evening for separate discussion?
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Seeing none here.
Aye.
Anything virtually? That motion passes 7-0.
No input.
Nathan Wardle is appointed to the Building Code Advisory and Appeal Board through 2027. Thank you both. Then finally, we have the Housing Commission. All right, back to the table then. We have two three-year terms through August 17th, 2028, and two applicants, Rick Baumhover
Mr. Mayor.
and Rick Murfeld. Ms. Resnick. I would entertain a motion here too, please.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I nominate Rick Baumhover and Rick Memfield for their two, three-year terms
consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Second by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
on the housing and, housing board.
Aye.
Farber.
Second.
Aye.
So we've got a motion by Sprank, second by Farber to appoint Rick Baumhover and Rick Murfeld to the Housing Commission. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is request to rezon property at, on West 32nd Street, and I will note for this public hearing that it is noted that the zoning advisory commission has recommended denial of the request, and earlier today, the applicant has submitted a written request to remand the rezoning request back to the zoning advisory commission for consideration of a conditional rezoning. That written request has been uploaded to the agenda item, and I just wanted to make a note of that.
And Adrian, could you, could you inform the council of your conversation with the city attorney? Because you mentioned something to me that you had a conversation with the city attorney about the motion that made, that are, is potentially, that is possible here, I guess. It's, it's more than just the suggested dispositions that are on the agenda.
Yeah, at this point, my understanding, and Krena, you can feel free to jump in if I'm incorrect, at this point, any, any motion can be made, and then we'll go through the, the traditional public hearing process. Wally will give his staff report, the applicant will have a chance to speak, any public input can be provided, and at any point during council's discussion, if they so choose to amend the motion in any way that they want, they can do so.
All right, so hopefully that gives everyone.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Do we have any questions before we move on? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that the council remand the issue to the zoning advisory commission and that we proceed with the public hearing.
Second.
I've got a motion by Jones and a second by Farber. Do you have a point of order, Mr. Resnick?
Mr. Mayor, I just, is that the same as tabling this, or is this something very different?
I don't believe it is, but Krena, can you help us on that? This is not the same as a tabling motion, correct?
Correct, it is not. If you table something, there's not any specific action taken in response. With a remand back to the commission, it would come before the commission again and has an opportunity to make its way back through the process to you.
So we can move forward with the public hearing, is what you're saying?
Correct.
All right, thank you, Krena. Does that clear that up, Mr. Resnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion. Oh, please, go ahead.
Nope, nope, that's okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Jones and a second by Farber to remand this back to the zoning advisory commission and move forward with the public hearing this evening, so Wally, let you begin.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have a presentation, if it's up on your screen, there we go. Just to kind of add a little bit more to that remanding discussion, so if it does get remanded back to the zoning advisory commission, and it is a conditional rezoning, that requires that the applicant agree in writing to those conditions, and that has to be signed by an ordinance, and that has to be presented before the city council can take action on it. If it is remanded back to the zoning advisory commission, we will re-notify all the property owners that are within 200 feet. They would go through the public hearing process again, information will be provided that wasn't presided at the last meeting. In addition to that, the applicant does not have to pay the fee again, so there's a cost savings a little bit along with that too, so.
Wally, real quick, can you, can you make it clear what remand back to the zoning advisory commission means, please?
Yeah, so basically, it's an opportunity for them to go back to the zoning advisory commission and have further discussion on certain topics and items that weren't discussed at the zoning advisory commission. We did this with the Murfeld property on Cedar Cross Road, where we went through a couple rezonings and, and say, hey, you know, there's a discussion, maybe it's a little bit too intense, let's look at doing a downzoning, let's remand it back to the zoning advisory commission for them to take an opportunity. What's great about remanding it back to the zoning advisory commission, it's very transparent, we re-notify again, it's published in the paper, it goes through the process again, and it comes back to you guys formally. If you were to table this request, it would not go back to the zoning advisory commission, it'd come right back to you at this table, the discussion would be left here. And as I go through the PowerPoint presentation, I'll explain some points that were probably discussed during the zoning advisory commission meeting, that's been brought up, that the applicant is willing to have a conversation about, and the reasonings why they're asking for the remanding. A couple things, one, the vote was 0 to 5, 0 to 5, so since that's a denial, that forces a supermajority vote at the city council. In addition, there's more than 20% of the land within 200 feet that was in opposition to the request, which also forces a majority vote at the city council. I think there's been discussion points that were brought up during the public hearing, and certain opportunities where the applicant can meet with the neighbors and maybe come to a compromise with regards to the discussion, and as we go through with the minutes and the conversation that was happening, you know, there's always concern, when you look at rezoning, we're not looking at just one use, we have to look at all those uses that are located in that office residential district, and with a conditional rezoning, we can be very specific, tailor it to a certain use, and even get involved with aspects of a site plan review and design aspects for that, that may have some ability to help alleviate maybe some of the potential concerns. But that's a process that will go through, it would come back for you for another public hearing for this, so.
Mr. Mayor, could I follow up on your, your question?
Yeah, just, if we're doing it as a point of order, just for clarification, then I think that's okay, right, Krena? Before we have a public hearing?
Correct, yes.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Resnick.
Is it about the, the remanding, does that, so that's, when you remand something, there's implied that changes will be made by the applicant, they're asking, they're going to be asking different questions and ask for a different agreement with.
Correct.
Right, so, well, you just mentioned that they were willing to have a conversation, but it's more than that, right? They're willing to change their application.
Exactly, yep.
That's my follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Okay. So we still get to go through the public hearing process, because it's an opportunity for the public to speak, and then you guys can make that decision at the end, so. So like, the zoning advisory commission has reviewed the request submitted by the property owner, or by the applicant, excuse me, Sherry Erlich, for a vacant property located at 32nd Street in the Northwest Arterial. The request is to rezon the property from R1 Single Family Residential to OR Office Residential with the intent of constructing a real estate office on the site. At the public hearing, Tom Larson represented the applicant, the applicant was not present at the meeting, and at that meeting, Mr. Larson went through the discussions with regards to the, the rezoning, the potential for an off-street parking, a lot that would be constructed on the site, some of the zoning requirements that are associated with it, and also discussed and rebutted some of the comments that were brought up by the neighbors. At that public hearing, two neighbors and two residents who lived across the street from 32nd Street, they're the ones located at 3152 and 3160, 32nd Street, spoke in opposition to the request, they expressed concerns that the OR zoning district allows for a broader range of commercial uses that may not fit in with the character of the neighborhood. They also expressed concerns with regards to potential spot zoning, and then also noted that the Northwest Arterial acts as a natural boundary that separates some of those commercial uses which are located on the north side, which is, we have an area that's Zone C3, let's get to the zoning map here, oh, don't have it in there. C3 general commercial is located on the, this portion of the property. This is owned to R3 multifamily residential. This portion of the property here is actually zoned OS, office service. That is a large piece of right-of-way that the city of Dubuque owns, that was rezoned back in 1999 when Kivellhand owned all the property, and prior to the Northwest Arterial bisecting the property, he had that rezoned to office commercial due to the fact that it was going to be bisected, and there's this remnant parcel that'd be left over, it'd be a little difficult to develop, so he wanted that low-intense office service, which is kind of like office residential also, for that adaptability, but then when the design came out, the city actually acquired it just because of the cul-de-sac, the termination. So there is a portion of the property is zoned OS office service here. The remaining portion around here is zoned R1 Single Family Residential. As I mentioned, the project site, Zone R1, it's about a half acre, it's 23,086 square feet. If you go to Beacon, it says it's 39,000, that's inaccurate, there's some discrepancies with how they calculate the square footage on that city's Cessar website, but it is 23,000 square feet. It's located on 32nd Street, just south of the Northwest Arterial, and it's undeveloped and vacant. The adjoining, adjacent land uses are residential to the north and to the east and to the south and to the west, we have the Northwest Arterial right-of-way, which is zoned OS office service, and R1 Single Family Residential. We have single-family residential uses to the west, to the south and east, but once again, to the north, we have the Northwest Arterial, and we have 32nd Street that is located along the curve of the property. West 32nd Street's classified as a minor arterial, they have about 4,190 average daily vehicle trips per day, and that was a DOT traffic count that was done in 2013. They actually just completed some new DOT traffic counts just recently, but those haven't been released yet, but the Northwest Arterial back in 2021, they had an average daily traffic trip count of 11,800. This is a table that shows the difference between R1 Single Family Residential and the OR Office Residential districts. The areas highlighting yellow are common zone, or permitted uses, everything that's not highlighted, yellow on the right-hand side, would be permitted at this location if it's rezoned, for the straight rezoning to OR Office Residential. Included in your packet, we provided all the letters of opposition with regards to the property owners, these are the property owners that were notified with the request. This is that notification map that we provided, so that, what we have to do is, we have to calculate the area that's within 200 feet of the area to be rezoned, we have to exclude all the right-of-way, so that area does not get counted in that, that factor. So everything you see shaded in red is what gets computed for that 20% of the area within 200 feet of the property, and that exceeded, it went to 42% of that area, so that kicks in that, that requirement for the supermajority vote, City Council. So the zoning advisory commission held the public hearing, they had several discussions with regards to the property. As I mentioned, the property owners brought up some discussions with regards to the residential character in the neighborhood, there's some other things that were brought up with a previous rezoning where a property owner, where the two individuals who reside now, both of those lots were being looked at, rezoned to R2, that was denied in the past, and they were rezoned to R1, two single-family homes were built on that site. The commission also had a brief discussion about potentially a condition, or a conditional rezoning, was brought up one of our, by one of our commissioners. I think that was brought up because they were looking at how many units could actually be built on this property that was zoned OR Office Residential, and the potential could be up to 19 units, so that commissioner had concerns about the intensity of the zone at that location. It did brought up the discussion about a conditional use permit, but that did not get acted upon at that time by the other commissioners. The other thing that was brought up was discussion about, you know, the area has transitioned and changed a little bit, we have office service, we also have the Northwest Arterial that's bisected the property, but there was some discussion about a natural boundary because of the Northwest Arterial separating some of the residential uses from the more intense uses to the north. Location, conversation they discussed is there's a bike hike trail right outside the back of the area. The engineering department did look at the property for access for it, so located on the aerial photo here, they looked at the discussion point of like, if there was a development here, where would that access be on 32nd Street? Well, it's got to line up across from the existing cul-de-sac here, so one of the conversations that was brought up by staff was, if this was to be subdivided into two, and there was a discussion about maybe potential for two single-family homes on this property, would this second lot here be granted access for a driveway? And that's probably not going to happen due because of the speed of the people traveling on 32nd Street and the visibility, but what would have to happen is you'd have to have an easement to go across this other lot here in order to provide access to the single-family home, if that was the situation there. I know with the conversation with the applicant, they're looking at doing just a real estate office, and other things that were brought up during discussion is, after listening to the neighbors, looking at designing the office to be more of a, appear more residential in nature along the 32nd Street side, including putting a garage, which was not their intent, and then also having the backside, might have a little bit more glass, that's a little bit more appealing towards the 32nd Street side, so trying to be a little bit more adapted to the, kind of, the existing site characteristics of the neighborhood. So, as I mentioned, the zoning advisory commission motion to recommend approval of the rezoning request just presented, they always have to make a motion in the positive, so they voted zero ayes to five nays, once again, that forces a majority vote, City Council, because of the recommendation of denial. Once again, it's more than 20% of the property owners with 200 feet of the property are not opposed to the rezoning, which also kicks in the supermajority vote for City Council. But as what Adrian has indicated, the applicant has submitted a letter requesting City Council remand the rezoning request back to the zoning advisory commission for consideration of a conditional rezoning, and then, like I noted before, if it's remanded back to the zoning advisory commission, the property owners would be re- notified of the conditional rezoning, and we'd go through that public hearing process again. I don't know if you had an opportunity to take a look at that letter, I know that was submitted today with regards to the request, but the applicant noted that after reviewing the comments from the zoning advisory commission and engaging in the conversation with city staff, we respectfully request that our rezoning application be remanded back to the commission for consideration as a conditional rezoning. The staff would provide the opportunity to present a revised request to conditionally rezone the property specifically for use as a real estate office, share proposed site layout for the commission's consideration, provide additional market data and site information supporting the proposed use, and they note that they would greatly appreciate the chance to continue the dialogue with the commission before any action is taken by the City Council at this level. One of those conversation points that they put on here was the proposed site layout for the commission's consideration. The chairperson did bring up during the public hearing that, although they don't like to, but it would have been nice to have an actual site plan, because there's a cost associated with hiring an engineer to prepare a site plan a little bit more detailed, and that's something that the applicant has indicated they're willing to do, is prepare a site plan, show a little bit more of the layout, how the, the land and the building would be situated on the site, where previously, we would not have that unless you go through a planned unit development.
I think that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions. All right. Well, thank you very much, Wally. Well, we are in a public hearing to consider a request from Sherry Erlich to zone property on West 32nd Street from R1 Single Family Residential to OR Office Residential zoning district. Now, the zoning advisory commission did recommend denial of this request, and the motion on the table here is to remand or send back this request to the zoning advisory commission. So at this point is where we would take public input, so if anyone has any of that, feel free to, to come on up, and just remember to please state your name and address for the record.
First of all, I'm Joni Heitzman. I live at 3152 West 32nd Street. I'm representing my husband and neighbors who could not be here tonight. We've been a very active group as far as sharing our information, you can see that from the number of responses. All, all the property owners, with the exception of one, responded requesting not to change the current zoning, and the final one didn't submit a paper, but verbally has said to, he'd rather have it residential one. The petition is to rezon from R1 to OR, and I did a lot of research on it, and a lot of the points that Wally brought up were points that I made after doing the research. It just didn't feel right to put OR in a long-established residential area. It just didn't, it doesn't fit with that. What surprised me during that zoning commission meeting was the property where the, the access to the trail is and the parking, that it was zoned OS, and that was like a shock to me, I thought, OS? There can't be an office there, it's a right-of-way, and it would require eliminating a trail and a centuries-old oak tree that's beautiful in there, and a pavilion, and a bike repair stop, all those things are in that thing, so to me, it seemed like it's a, the park committee, or park department maintains the mowing and care for the area, so I never dreamt that it was an office designation. But spot zoning is defined as rezoning of a single parcel or a small area to a different zoning classification than the surrounding properties, and that's what's happening essentially here. The arterial does serve as a boundary, and it would be our preference that that boundary stands true, and everything to the northwest is commercial, R3 multifamily, a variety of designations there, but everything on this side, on the southeast side, remain residential. There is nothing along that whole 32nd Street on that section going down quite far that is anything but R1. Wally mentioned 3152 and 3160, they were two lots that were created by taking a single property, which was known as the Sweeney Property, and it was 3172 West 32nd, had an old building, or old home on it that was built in 1880. It was unrepairable, the contractor pursued an R3 or R2, I'm not sure which designation. We weren't there at the time, but the neighbors all made their opinion known that they did not want that, and it would have, it would have changed the layout of the homes and the directional positioning of, of homes in that area. So thankfully, the contractor went on to subdivide the lot, create two homes, the Heitzman Home and the Voss Home. We had lived there for five years, so that was when the 3152 was completed, and we chose that area because it was a longstanding old neighborhood. And as far as, Ms. Erlich mentioned something about the, the trail being a detriment to somebody wanting to build a home on the said property, and it's like, are you kidding me? I was so thrilled to have that trail right outside my front door. It is a real treasure for Dubuque to have that trail, and we've not had any problems or situations come up that concern us about the trail. So I can't imagine, you know, why would you take a perfectly level, open lot, which in Dubuque, you know, topography-wise, we don't have a lot of level lots, we have a lot of hillsides and a lot of bluffs, but it's a beautiful spot for a home, and it's a large enough lot to, you can build a nice-sized house and still have lots of edging around the house that would give it a little insulation for the property. So to us, it felt like it's an erosion into R1 to change this to an office, and yet, looking at the OR information, the principal permitted uses, conditional uses, accessory uses that can happen once the designation is made to OR, it, one entry says office, and the rest is a pulberry of things that would not be appropriate in a residential area. Spot zoning is spot zoning, and it can be beneficial if it meets a need for the neighborhood and if it brings public benefit to the neighborhood and not to one individual. I believe there's lots of vacant properties in the city of Dubuque that would make wonderful office settings, I just don't think it needs to be in our neighborhood. Not that it wouldn't be low intensity or whatever, it's just, it's not a fit. They were two lots that were created by taking a single property, which was known as the Sweeney Property, and it was 3172 West 32nd. Had an old building or old home on it that was built in 1880. It was unrepairable. The contractor pursued an R3 or R2, I'm not sure which designation. We weren't there at the time, but the neighbors all made their opinion known that they did not want that. And it would have, it would have changed the layout of the homes and the directional positioning of homes in that area. So thankfully, the contractor went on to subdivide the lot, create two homes, the Heitzman Home and the Voss Home. We had lived there for five years, so that was when the 3152 was completed. And we chose that area because it was a longstanding old neighborhood. And as far as Ms. Erlich mentioned something about the trail being a detriment to somebody wanting to build a home on the said property. And it's like, are you kidding me? I was so thrilled to have that trail right outside my front door. It is a real treasure for Dubuque to have that trail. And we've not had any problems or situations come up that concern us about the trail. So I can't imagine, you know, why would you take a perfectly level, open lot, which in Dubuque, you know, topography-wise, we don't have a lot of level lots. We have a lot of hillsides and a lot of bluffs, but it's a beautiful spot for a home. And it's a large enough lot to give you, you can build a nice size house and still have lots of edging around the house that would give it a little insulation for the property. So to us, it felt like it's an erosion into R1 to change this to an office. And yet, looking at the OR information, the principal permitted uses, conditional uses, accessory uses that can happen once the designation is made to OR. One entry says office and the rest is a puer of things that would not be appropriate in a residential area. Spot zoning is spot zoning and it can be beneficial if it meets a need for the neighborhood and if it brings public benefit to the neighborhood and not to one individual. I believe there's lots of vacant properties in the city of Dubuque that would make wonderful office settings. I just don't think it needs to be in our neighborhood. Not that it wouldn't be low intensity or whatever. It's just, it's not a fit and it's destroying an old neighborhood or the beginning of the destruction. So it is our request that you side with the recommendation that came to you from the zoning advisory commission.
Joni, real quick, I got you at six minutes right now, so just so you know.
I'm winding up.
All right, thank you.
There might be somebody else here to talk to, but I wanted to, again, thank you for considering it. Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you, Joni, for your comments. Any other public input this evening?
Genevieve Voss, 3160 West 32nd Street. My concern seems that, I don't know if any of you live in an area that's a neighborhood, ask yourself, do I want a real estate office across from my driveway? I don't. And I just feel like there's a lot of other places a real estate agent could put their building site. So with that, I just add my feelings about a business. And it, who knows what they'll sell it someday and what else could be there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve, for your comments. Anyone else on this item this evening? Going once, going twice. Anything virtually, Adrian or Cory? No?
Nope.
Thank you. Okay. All right, back to us for discussion then. I will, I'll start us off. First of all, I appreciate everybody's input. We received a lot in writing and then also here tonight. I do think it makes sense to remand this back to the zoning advisory commission. I think the thing that I like about it the most is it just lengthens the conversation. It basically gives us another opportunity to be able to have more discussion about this. It gives, I should say, it gives the neighborhood and the community and the zoning advisory commission some time to have some more discussion about this. I actually would hesitate personally to discuss this too much tonight at this desk because I think we'd be discussing based on some assumptions that we don't know yet. I think it would be helpful to hear from the zoning advisory commission. But that is simply my opinion. I'm just stating it, but I'll open it up for any council members if you do have any other things to say. Ms. Farber.
I concur with your statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farber.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Let me just say to all of you, the reason I made the motion that I did was this opens a new opportunity to maybe fix this so it's appealing to you. Maybe not. In fact, I'll say probably not. But at least it allows the applicant to not have to invest more money to get an answer. The applicant sounds willing to talk about alternatives with the commission and that's the place that that should happen. Had I had to vote on this tonight, I would have absolutely concurred with the commission and denied the change. So this may give everybody an opportunity to say, that's not so bad. This limits what could happen in the future. There's all kinds of things they could do with their next recommendation to us, and that recommendation may be to deny the applicant once again. But I wanted to create the easiest path for everybody to continue the discussion and see if we can find our way to an amicable solution that serves the neighborhood first and foremost and allows the applicant to figure out if they can do their business there or not. So certainly, certainly didn't intend to limit your opportunity to get this over with, but it sounds like it's worthy of more discussion. That's what's going to happen.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Ms. Rousell.
I would just like to add and concur with Mr. Jones that remanding to the commission seems like a great plan. I always think it's important for someone who's wanting to make a zoning change to reach out to the neighbors and first of all, just say, hey, why do you want to be part of this neighborhood? And how are you going to go about being a good neighbor if you are given the opportunity to do so? So I like this opportunity that we've given this applicant now that they can reach out to you. Maybe you can better understand what they may want to do with the property. As Mr. Jones said, that might say, oh, hey, I understand, that sounds great. Or you may say, no, it's still not good for me, but at least they have taken the opportunity to talk with you about the plan. And so I'm looking forward to seeing how this goes through the process. It's just always good to have time for conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Rousell. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. Mr. Wernamont, could you ask, answer a question for me? You're talking about a site plan that might be part of this remanded program. So does the site plan include an advertising plan or a plan for signage? I could see why by that spot, they might want to put up a large sign or some other type of thing. If they plan to do that, will that be part of the site plan? Or is that something separate?
That would be something that we can definitely bring up to the zoning advisory commission at that time. Signage plan will be discussed too.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
Yeah. I would just like to thank everybody who's come to participate and who provided feedback to us. I always think it's great, Ms. Erlich, that you want to build in our community. And so I appreciate that we have a process in place for us to discuss this openly here. But I very much appreciate our commission and the time and effort that they put into looking at this deeply and making recommendations to us. I think it speaks to the power of our commissions and I'm grateful for their service. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion here. Motion on the table is to remand this to the zoning advisory commission and part of the motion was to go through at that public hearing that we just had. So with that, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number two is Water System Improvements 2024 North English Road Water Main Extension Project Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
First by Jones, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. Water Department Director Chris Lester is recommending city council adopt the resolution approving the plan specifications form of contract, an estimated cost of $1,620,000 for the water system improvements 2024 North English Road Water Main Extension Project. North English Road Water Main Extension Project will bring water service to a portion of the southwest arterial, starting at Edville Lane and North Cascade Road, west along the southwest arterial to North English Road. This project will allow continued extensions looping water main along the southwest arterial between US Highway 15161 to US Highway 20 while also providing service between pressure zones and increasing water servants reliance to the city's southern and westernmost customers. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We're in a public hearing to consider city council adopt the resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the water system improvements 2024 North English Road Water Main Extension Project. Do we have anyone here from the public to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, nothing virtually.
No.
Okay. Back to us then for any discussion. Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have any public input this evening?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Rick Dickinson. I reside at 205 Hill Street. I also have the pleasure of serving as president of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation and I serve on the board of directors of Dubuque Initiative. And the reason I've come to the podium is to discuss item number seven on the action agenda, which is the city's application for funds for 1701 Central. I just wanted to share that Dubuque Initiative is a private nonprofit whose mission is in part downtown restoration, has really made a focus on the 1700 block and now the 1800 block of Central. This particular property at 1701 has been at best an attractive nuisance. It's drawn squatters, graffiti, criminal activity, and this is the opportunity to turn that around. And the Dubuque Initiative is working with the city on acquisition. The catalyst grant is there as part of the solution, but especially 563 Design. Andrew and Emily McCready are, will be the eventual developers of the project with commercial downstairs and residential above. It's just part of the restoration and rebirth of these two blocks of Central Avenue. In the next two years, we're going to see some phenomenal change and I'd like to thank the council for their favorable consideration of item number seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, for your comments. Any others this evening? Seeing no one here, nothing virtually?
No input.
Okay. All right, move on to action items, please, Adrian.
Action item number one is travel as professional development lessons from Bakersfield NC and Brunei.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and view the presentation.
Second.
First by Resnick, second by Wethel. Take it away.
All right. Let's get that presentation up there. Cory Burbak, Assistant City Manager, I'm here with Climate Action Coordinator Michelle Kim for a fun topic this evening. We get the opportunity, and I know some of you do as well, to travel for work and we want to talk tonight about work travel as a form of professional development. So at the city of Dubuque, we have development plans that all of our employees use as they further their professional development goals. A lot of folks think that means we go to conferences. And conferences are part of it, but they're that little purple part up there. Coursework and training is 10% of how we meet our professional development goals at the city. That blue part is about developmental relationships. That means working with you all, working with each other, and then working with residents, the boards we serve on, all sorts of ways that we can have others help us. But that big chunk, that 70%, is challenging experiences and assignments. And those can happen by taking on new stretch goals within the workplace. They can happen by cheering projects. They can happen in all sorts of ways. But one way that I've been incredibly grateful in my time at the city, that the city manager and you all have supported, is this opportunity for us to travel to other communities. That helps us better the way we provide services in Dubuque and it helps other communities. You all know that we can't possibly provide all the things that we need for our community by ourselves and we reach out to partners every day to help us. And so other communities are some of those partners that we go and help in when we are needed and they come to help us. So I'm going to talk first about a trip that I took this spring to Bakersville, North Carolina. I went to Bakersville as part of the Communities by Design Program. It's through the American Foundation of Architects. Those of you who have been around for a while know that we've actually had a project, a design assessment team come to Dubuque twice. They came to Dubuque first when we were first starting to think about the Bee Branch Watershed Flood Project. And they sent a team, so the way this program works is they typically send teams that are primarily made up of architects, different types of architects, but then other content experts, depending on what needs to happen, to a community for a three-day intensive project. So they came to Dubuque to help us think originally about the Bee Branch Flood Mitigation Project. And then they sent a second team, I think about 2017, when we were thinking about this concept of resilience hubs and how we could make structures in Dubuque more resilient and neighborhoods more resilient. So we've had the opportunity to have help from other communities come to Dubuque. And when they were here, I worked with them and I said, like, this is fun. If there's ever a community that needs Dubuque's help, I'm willing to go. So that's how I ended up in Bakersville, North Carolina. These are some pictures from Bakersville after Hurricane Helene came through back in September. Bakersville had 30 inches of rain drop on them during the time that the hurricane came through, 100 mile an hour winds, everything you saw in the national news. And they are a town of about 500 people that sits in the valley, about two hours outside of Asheville. They got this. So when we had the opportunity to go to Bakersville in May, it was because of a request that they had put in for service. And I have to tell you, the people of Bakersville, they're everything you can imagine about a small town in Appalachia. All of the things that can be challenges for a town of that size when they don't have resources can also be strengths. They are the community that said, what do you mean FEMA is not going to be there for 30 days? Give me a chainsaw, let's go. So by the time we got there, these were their goals. They were thinking about rebuilding infrastructure, resetting their town. And here's where the professional development for me comes in. I have an internal goal of being able to serve the residents of Dubuque when disaster hits, if disaster hits in Dubuque. And the only way you get good at that is by being thrown into it. So I don't want the first time that I am serving Dubuque in disaster to be when I'm learning about it. So one of my goals in going to Bakersville was to be able to serve them but improve my emergency response and recovery skills. My other goal was that I have had the opportunity to serve on national boards and organizations and I have spent pretty much my entire career in Dubuque. I know one structure. And so part of my goal is that when I get to go to these communities and serve, I get to learn other ways of doing things. And I come back with creative solutions that their councils and their staff are thinking about. So while I'm serving, I'm bringing all of these learnings back to the residents and businesses of Dubuque when I go. So here's a little bit of what it looks like. I wanted to kind of bring Bakersville into the room for a second. We spend three days. We land on the ground and the first day, this cross-sector team meets with everybody we can talk to. There's a public meeting. Bakersville hosted a barbecue for us. It was awesome. Everybody shows up and they talk about what they love about their community and what they want to see change in their community. You can see in the top right, one of the properties that hadn't really been touched since the hurricane. Bakersville has a unique challenge. 60% of their property prior to Helene was public property. And so you all know the way budgets work and that means 60% of their property isn't creating property tax revenue for their community. After Helene, after the FEMA buyouts, they believe that 75% of their town will be public private, public property that is not creating property tax revenue for them. So as they think about, they have the same goals as us. They wanted affordable housing. They wanted a variety of housing options. They wanted to recreate their town. The creek comes down out of the mountains and they have a creek walk just like the Bee Branch on a smaller scale. It got obliterated. They want to rebuild it. They were thinking about how to do all those things with significantly limited financial resources. So we meet with the community, then we hole up somewhere in town for two days and we design solutions based on professional expertise. So in our instance, in the top left-hand corner, you can see a team of landscape architects and building architects from around the country. It's really fun just to think creatively in that space, as well as some policy folks. The woman in the kind of top center standing behind me was the director of Main Street Programs for Wisconsin for all of their small towns. So you get to network and create solutions. And then on the last night, we present recommendations. You all have seen consultants come in this room and they bring expertise, they bring fresh perspective. Sometimes they bring the ability to say things that those in the room feel too mired in our own stories, right? So you can go in and say, here's what from a professional opinion we think you should be doing. These are some of the solutions that we came up with in three days. That top left-hand photo and the top right-hand photo, you can see that we've laid out the entire community and thought about redesigning walkable neighborhoods, redesigning that creek. Just like the Bee Branch, what they learned and what was news to them is that you can do all the design work at the end of the water that you want to. If you don't slow it down upstream, the way we've been doing through our public-private partnerships in Dubuque, you're never going to be successful at the end. We also were able to introduce the concept of resilience hubs to them. So they happened to be in a community where a school had closed and so when they were without power and water for months, they used that building, but it wasn't ideal. And so we helped them to redesign this concept of a resilience hub that could be used as a community gathering space, a library, a coffee shop when the sun's out. And then in those times of need, it would serve as a resilience center for the community. And then lastly, you can see some of the design work that happened around street sites So we provide them case studies that they might want to look at, they have some ideas from Dubuque that they're working on. And then at the end of that work, what we do is we leave them with a report, and then the staff from the Architects' Foundation and those of us that were there offer to be a friendly call once in a while when they get into a project and they want to know what comes next. That's an opportunity within the United States, but we also have the opportunity to share those stories across the globe, so I'm going to ask Michelle to share that.
Hello. As Cory said, my name is Michelle Kim, I am the Climate Action Coordinator for the city. And this past July, I had a really incredible opportunity to go to Brunei, Jerusalem, which is a country on the Borneo Islands through the, this is a mouthful, so Young Southeast Asian Leadership Initiative Professional Exchange Program. And so this was just some of my lessons learned from my time there. So to start off, some of my goals, as you guys probably know, the scientific evidence for climate change has never been clearer, and the urgency for sustainability work has never been greater, especially at a global scale. Our earth is a system, and so this is kind of a big problem that we need to all work on together, not in small community silos. So that's why my goals going into the Y CLE program were to, one, gain insights into diverse perspectives on climate change, to strengthen my ability to communicate with audiences from varied backgrounds overseas in Dubuque, just kind of covering my bases; two, to build stronger connections with outside communities for future collaboration opportunities; and three, share and exchange innovative solutions for addressing climate challenges. So here are just a couple of pictures for you guys to look at while I talk. Brunei is a super unique place when talking about climate change impacts. So first, it's an Islamic country led by an absolute monarchy, so those pictures up there, it's one of the Sultan and of the Queen, his wife. And actually, about 50 to 60% of its GDP originates from oil and gas, so that's like a pretty massive chunk. That picture of the green nodding donkey you see on the corner is from, I took from the Brunei Energy Hub, which was a whole museum paid for by Shell, and just kind of going through the history of oil and gas in Brunei. But at the same time, revenue generated from the oil and gas sector have been used to provide free healthcare for its citizens, free higher education, and also subsidize affordable housing for all its community members. And so although poverty and hardship still exist in Brunei, homelessness, especially like very apparent homelessness, was super rare because of the funding that oil and gas have been able to provide for this country. So learning about this dynamic between its country, Brunei and oil and gas, really helped me think critically about the trade-offs that countries, and especially us, face between economic dependence and reliability on fossil fuels and also the need to pursue sustainable measures. Here are a couple more pictures from my time in Brunei, so kind of just going like a book left to right. I had the opportunity to visit the American Embassy, to meet with the program facilitators, and talk about possible future collaboration opportunities from some small firms in Brunei. I also learned how to play the gulang talang, which is that instrument you see on the corner. It's a traditional Bruneian instrument that actually only royals were allowed to play up until Brunei's independence in the 80s, so it was a super unique experience. That picture in the middle is from when I met with other youth activists. Some of them focus on climate while some of them focus on other human issues, not that climate isn't a human issue, but other issues. But I was just struck at how similar our challenges were even across oceans. They were lamenting about challenges to funding and getting that activation, energy up to move people into action, which I really resonated with. I also had the opportunity to share a meal with one of Brunei's first diplomats. He invited me into his home, and it was amazing to listen to his stories about how Brunei has changed over the years, over the decades. And that picture on the bottom is from the River Village I was fortunate enough to go to, that was their fire station, and instead of fire trucks, they had fire boats, which was super interesting. So these experiences broadened my perspective. Too often, sustainability work happens in, within boundaries, whether geographic or academic or even financial, and this trip really showed me how interconnected our challenges were and how much we can learn if we just lean into other perspectives and different contexts of living. So I think that was my last picture slide, but I saw firsthand how two things can be true at one time. Brunei is heavily dependent on oil and gas, something that sounds pretty familiar to us in the U.S., but at the same time, they recognize the need for change with their oil reserves depleting. So their government has actually pledged to grow its green economy by 2035. Some of their stated goals, very similar to us, included reducing industrial emissions, expanding forest cover, and also increasing renewable energy, particularly solar. So it was really nice to see that although they were superfunded by oil and gas, a lot of that money is going back into green infrastructure and the green economy. For me professionally, this trip was invaluable, it strengthened my cross-cultural communication skills, gave me perspectives on balancing economic realities with meeting our sustainability goals, and connected me with peers from all over facing similar challenges, and I'm super excited to bring some of these lessons back to Dubuque. Thank you.
I want to wrap up by answering a question that we get every time we talk about trips like this. The benefit that the city sees in work like this is invaluable, as I hope you have heard from Michelle and I. The investment that the city makes, although every one of these projects is different, is typically that these happen on paid staff time. So we were working for the city when we were doing this, but in both Michelle and my case, there were outside funders that covered all of our travel costs associated with it. So in my instance, it's the Architects' Foundation who covered all of my expenses. In Michelle's case, that work is funded through a State Department grant. And then the thing that I want to wrap up with is that, again, this is one way that we support professional development for our staff. You all have made workforce recruitment and retention a priority at the city for the past few years, and this is one way we do it. This is a way that employees say, I want to stay at the city of Dubuque because we get to do things like this. There are a number of other opportunities out there, depending on the position and the fit, that we invest in our employees every day. So thank you for your support in that, and we'd be happy answering questions.
Well Cory, Michelle, thank you so much. We haven't had a presentation like this that I can recall, where we got to talk about some of the experiences that you had. And I'm struck by how different your experiences were. There were some similarities, obviously, but they're, they're different for a number of reasons. I think you're at different points in your careers, you had different purposes in going, but you both came back with so much benefit from this, and I think that was, it was a really good thing to see. I have so much that I'd love to say about this, I probably won't say it all here and don't really need to, and I'll open it up to everybody, but there is so much benefit in being able to have a perspective outside of the walls of our own city. And I think that goes for city employees in the same way that it does for any private business. You know, it is, it is true, and you pointed out, you know, that the question of how do you pay for something like this is always one of the number one questions, and is it worth the investment to do that? I will go out just straight up and say that I think any city that thinks that they can spend their entire time, all the time, in their own boundaries and never leave, is probably not a very good city to live in. It's probably not a great place to be, and you're not going to be able to retain those quality employees, but you're also not going to be able to have a perspective that you need from other places to be able to apply it here. And I think, you know, you saw that in, it was Bakersville, right? Yes, Bakersville. In Bakersville, they, I think, probably appreciated your outside perspective with the other groups on your team, or the other members of your team that you had, in the situation that they were in, to be able to understand that you had some expertise in some of the things that they were trying to work on, that you've already accomplished in your city, and same goes for some of the other members of the team. And to be able to see, Michelle, the types of things that you saw in a country like that, it's interesting because I can relate in my trip to Dubai that I took not long ago, very similar in some ways in that sustainability is a part of who they are. I mean, there's solar panels on top of almost every single building that I saw in Dubai. I thought I was fascinated by that, as they are the, one of the richest oil and gas-producing countries in the world. So it's, it's good to be able to hear that and see that and understand some of that perspective in the work that you do in sustainability in particular, so appreciate that very much. So that's enough for now for me, but yeah, I would love to open it up. Yeah, Ms. Farber, please.
So I wanted to thank you very much for the presentation, and so pleased to see that your shoulders have broadened quite a bit from these international experiences. And I'm speaking from someone who has greatly appreciated living over a decade overseas, myself, for a business, and I just really appreciate all of the, the growth, the development, and the insights provided by having another culture or cultures work with you, or you have the opportunity to experience their cultures, also other cities. And I just think it's really, the city is very fortunate that we have provided these opportunities for you two and everybody else that does travel, because I really think that it, just your, your awareness, and again, I love the expression that it does broaden your shoulders and gives you some confidence that you can share, and it's just really motivational as well. So thank you very much for doing this, and the more the merrier. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Farber. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cory and Kim, thank, or Michelle, thank you for all this lovely information. I did not know that much about Brunal, Brunale before, so that was very interesting, so thank you. But when I, when I look at overall, like, professional development and learning, to kind of piggyback with what the mayor said, it's good for folks to learn what other communities are doing, what other cultures are doing. We may not agree with what they're doing, but it's good to learn. I know myself, I always seek outside help or guidance, or when I have an issue, I learn more from having a conversation with somebody else in my field or just having a similar experience. So I'm all for that, we are sending out our staff to do this, so thank you for the information. Thank you.
Ms. Rousell.
Well, thank you for sharing that, that great story. I think it's important for us to remember that our employees are our best asset, and because we want the best possible people to serve our residents, and in doing that, we need to invest in you. And I'm glad that we can do that, but what's really good to see is that we also seek out, outside funding to help make these things happen. So it's, it's just so important for people to know that there's effort involved in finding these opportu, excuse me, these opportunities, and finding that there's funding available to do it, and making that match, and then investing in the people that we have that serve our community. So thank you for doing that, thank you for seeing the world on our behalf and sharing our message with them and bringing their message back to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel.
I just wanted to say, as somebody that works in healthcare so many hours per year, I spend continuing education hours through the Mayo Clinic, and I'm pretty sure my patients are glad I do. It helps me to take the best care of them, that I know how to. It helps me to know where to look for answers when I do not have them, and to build relationships where literally I can call someone who's an expert in their field and I can ask them a question. And I see it very similarly in what you described specifically, Cory, in that we all have an expertise or a knowledge that we don't always know we have until we get to use it and apply it somewhere. And when we go places, it does leave a void in our family and our neighbors, and it's a sacrifice in finding somebody to run my kids and someone to help just with day-to-day tasks that are not within your work. And so it is a commitment to go away and to do this learning and to do this experience, and I'm grateful you're both willing to do it. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Well, of course, I agree with every single word uttered up here. Thank you for, for putting yourselves out there and doing this. We'll remind everybody too that we've seen, and I can't begin to pronounce this, we've seen Ypsilanti fellows here from Southeast Asia and around the world that have come to learn about Dubuque and to tell us about their home cultures and their challenges. And the bottom line is, you two are going to be better at everything that you do for us and for the citizens of Dubuque and your home lives because you got to do this, so thanks for doing it.
I'll just, I'll close with one other thing that I, I'm not sure we've said yet, and we don't just get to go on these trips, we get invited to go on these trips, you know, and, and the reason for that is because Dubuque is on the map nationally and internationally. It's the work that's been done here that has put our staff, and sometimes our members of council, in a position to be able to take these types of opportunities and go not just to learn, but to also provide our expertise that, that we have based on the work that's been done in Dubuque. It's one of the number one things that I've learned when I've traveled, is how much people respect the work that we've done here. It's, it's actually pretty incredible. It was unexpected. I didn't expect that in this role. I didn't expect people to know Dubuque so well and talk about us so, so highly and appreciatively. I should have known that, I mean, I feel that way, but I didn't realize that a lot of people outside of Dubuque felt that way. So it's, it's pretty incredible that we get these opportunities. So thanks for going, looking forward to hearing about the next time you go somewhere very cool as well, so. Well, thanks for being here tonight. All right, motion here was to receive and file and have that presentation in discussion. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Action item number two is Award Public Improvement Contract Auburn-Custer Utility and Roadway Reconstruction Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Gonna motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending city council award the public improvement contract for the Auburn-Custer Utility and Roadway Reconstruction Project to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete in the amount of $1,276,680.60. The bid amount is 13.16% below the engineer's estimate. The project provides for the removal and replacement of approximately 1,480 linear feet of six-inch diameter vitrified clay sanitary sewer, approximately 1,000 linear feet of various-sized water main, approximately 360 linear feet of various-sized storm sewer, and the installation of approximately 1,800 feet of drain tile, and the repaving of Auburn Street and Custer Street between University and Loris and North Grandview and Atlantic. Project is located in Consent Decree Sewer Shed Number 11. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request, Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Ms. Farber.
Yeah, per my request to recuse from our previous discussion of this item, I would like to accuse myself of any discussion or vote because I own property that's affected by this.
All right, thank you, Ms. Farber.
Yeah.
Ms. Resnick.
Thank you. So Mr. Van Milligan, just in general, when we have projects like this and we have the low bidder, and this low bidder happens to be from the beautiful community of Cascade, do we maintain oversight of this? I mean, we have had different times where there have been problems with people and, you know, construction things, say perhaps at the Water and Resource Recovery Center, we have somebody come in, fix something, and then there's, you know, a problem. Do we remain, have oversight? So do we watch over this, or do we just say, tell us when you're done?
Yeah, so you might remember when we get received Iowa Department of Transportation funding to bring up to what they call a state of good repair, the Northwest Arterial, before we accepted that jurisdiction over that roadway from the state of Iowa. And I'm trying to remember, I think that's about an $8 million project. We actually received an award for our oversight. The DOT was so impressed with how our engineers watch over the completion of a project. And so the answer is yes. So we either ourselves do the inspections, or we contract inspections with a consulting firm when our staff doesn't have the time because we have so many projects going on. I think in this case that it is a project that, that we'll be doing the inspections ourselves.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel. Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
That motion passes six with, six ayes and one abstention.
Action item number three is North Schmidt Island Collection System Project, Contract Number One, Award Public Improvement Contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones.
And we'll receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Second by Jones, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending city council award the public improvement contract for the North Schmidt Island Collection System Project, Contract Number One Project, to Chig Fry Excavating in the amount of $248,560. The bid amount is 9.65% above the engineer's estimate. The small portion of sewer replacements will be bid as North Schmidt Island Collection System Project Number One. This project provides for the installation of approximately 200 linear feet of sanitary sewer in the area located immediately jet, adjacent to the Key Hotel Expansion Project on the north half of Chaplain Schmidt Island. Contractor will be awarded an incentive of $1,000 per calendar day for each day the project is completed before the compliance, final completion date of October 1, 2025, up to a maximum of 15 days or $15,000. Additionally, for each calendar day that any work remains uncompleted beyond the final completion date, the contractor will be assessed and shall pay $800 per calendar day, not as a penalty, but as a predetermined and agreed cost of delay until final completion requirements are met. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Yeah, Ms. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I see we have two companies, two good companies who bid on this, and this estimate is 9.65, this amount is 9.65 above the estimate. Is there a rejection threshold that we, because sometimes we reject the bids and, and go out to bid, is this on a case-by-case basis or do we say at a certain threshold, we want to start over again?
Well, there, there certainly is a, a point at which we would say we need to rebid it or redesign a project if it's far enough over the budget that the budgeted, there's not budgeted money available. Now, in this case, this is a small part of a very large project that's, has funding of $2.64 million to complete it. And it's a project that timeliness is extremely important, which is why we have the, the incentive and the penalties built in because the hotel has hopes to open in December and they need to have a sewer to open up the project. And so for this small portion of the project being less than 10% over budget, it's, it's about a $26,000, $27,000 difference. So it really wouldn't affect our recommendation on awarding the project.
Uh, thank you. So there, this is like there's subtract, some contracted, uh, who is the overall contractor for this project? Is it the city of Dubuque?
So it's, the city is contracting for the work.
Yes.
Because it's a, a public sanitary sewer and it's being awarded to Chig Fry Excavating as the private contractor to actually do the work.
Okay. So I, I guess so Chig Fry is, is this project, right?
Yes.
And the overall?
Oh, okay. There'll be more bids.
Okay.
So yeah, there'll be more phases of this project that we bid. This is just the phase that serves the hotel. There'll be other, the rest of this $2.6 million or, well, it's about $2.4 million remaining will be future phases of the project that will be bid and you'll, you'll consider those bids too.
So, so the city of Dubuque is the main contractor. It's not Conlon or something like that, right?
No, well, Conlon's building the hotel, but that's a contract with the DRA.
I see.
The city's not involved with the construction of the hotel, but we are involved with the construction of the public improvements, like sanitary sewer.
Thank you for the information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I get what Mr. Resnick is saying about this has gone over budget, but I also understand we have a tight timeline. And unfortunately, I think if we were to let this go out to bid again, we would not be able to meet that tight, tight deadline because essentially this has to be done in like a month and a half, which is asking a lot of any contractor. So it is annoying that it is going to go over the budget estimate, or the estimated, estimated amount. Fortunately, we just don't have the time to re, let it go out to bid again. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any further discussion? Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is approval of Lynwood Cemetery Agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Sprank, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. Intern Parks and Recreation Director Steve Faisal is recommending city council approval of the Lynwood Cemetery Agreement. Lynwood Cemetery Association is an Iowa nonprofit corporation. The association owns and controls Lynwood Cemetery. The cemetery is a perpetual care cemetery subject to Iowa code. The association and the city were parties to litigation regarding responsibility for the preservation and protection of the cemetery. The cemetery was placed into receivership and the state of Iowa initially took on financial responsibility for the preservation and protection of the cemetery to the city of Dubuque. The district court ordered that the city of Dubuque will be responsible for the preservation and protection of the cemetery on and after July 1, 2025. The agreement outlines the following. The association will continue operating Lynwood Cemetery on a day-to-day basis. Lynwood Cemetery staff will continue to be employed by Lynwood Cemetery Association. Number two, the association will continue to own and control the cemetery. Number three, the agreement is for a term of one year and may be extended by mutual agreement of the parties. Number four, the association agrees to assist the Friends of Lynwood in maximizing revenue for the association. Friends of Lynwood, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, has recently been established for the purpose, purpose of raising funds to support the association's current operations and grow its endowed funds. Number five, the association will support and assist the city in securing the formation of a township that is the corporate limits of the city. Number six, the city will designate one representative to serve on the association's board of directors and thus will have access to all financials for the association. Number seven, the association agrees to explore reasonable opportunities to capitalize on its return, on its investment in excess real estate not currently utilized or reasonably expected to be utilized in the foreseeable future for operational needs of the cemetery. Any sale of real estate outside the regular course of the association's operations and any proceeds from the sale of the real estate shall be deposited into one of the association's endowed investment accounts. The fiscal year 2026 Parks and Recreation Department operating budget contains budgeted funding in the amount of $110,000, the express purposes as outlined in the attached agreement. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion do we have? Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not against us having to do this. I want to start off with that because there are many folks, his loved ones interned at Lynwood Cemetery, so it's very important. It is frustrating that we as a city have to take this on. So I do have a couple of questions for the city manager. If you could go on about, kind of discuss a little bit more about number four, about where the Friends of Lynwood, how that would work, if they, if they have any start on that at all? And then also about number five, about the township idea? And then part of number seven about the first sale, if there's any real estate ever sold?
Sure. I'm going to address the last two. And Ken Miller, who's the secretary, treasurer for the Cemetery Association is in attendance and he probably can better address the question about how does the not-for-profit fundraising going to work? But, so let me just get your other two, what were your other two numbers here?
The, about the township idea, the number five.
Okay.
And then number seven about the realis, if they were to ever sell land.
Sure. About number five. So townships are allowed to have a cemetery levy and so we believe legally that a township can be established, which is the corporate limits of the city of Dubuque. So right now, this $110,000 we referred to, that was our estimated expense this current fiscal year, is going to have to come from the city general fund. And of course, that competes with other general fund activities like police and fire and things like that. And if we are able to establish a township with the boundaries of the city limits, then that can actually have a cemetery levy. And so then that levy won't compete with any other general fund activities of the city. It would just be established to bring in dollars, property tax dollars, to support the cemetery's operation. And then the idea of selling land. So the, the cemetery has a lot of vacant property and of course, they have, their intention with that vacant property is to bury people in it. But as they've made the case to us that the trend is turning towards cremation, it's one of the reasons they're in financial trouble because they don't get as much money when they bring in a, somebody who's been cremated and, and I don't remember exactly what you call the building, uh?
I believe a colibarium.
Colibarium?
Yes.
There you go. You don't get as much money when you put the ashes in a colibarium. But also you don't use as much property. So we have talked to them about this idea that there is one section of their property there on Windsor, kind of off to the side, that maybe there ought to be some consideration is should that property be sold for development? And then that money put into one of their endowment funds and then their endowment funds generates a percent of investments every year to help support it. So it's, it's, it's not an absolute, but it is something that needs to be explored. Is that a reasonable thing to do? And as I said, Ken is here, right? Yeah, would you mind coming up to the microphone and addressing the not-for-profit question, please?
I am Ken Miller, reside at 798 Carriage Hill Drive here in Dubuque. I have served on the Lynwood Cemetery Board for a number of years. Currently am honored to be the president, not the treasurer, but that's fine. I'm a, I'm a numbers guy, so I get to address those. Lynwood Cemetery is actually what's called a 501(c)(13) cemetery, which means we are perpetual care cemetery. People, individuals can donate money as a charitable contribution to the cemetery, but they can't leave bequest when they die and we can't receive money from private foundations. There's more and more private foundations to this. So we went out and established a separate 501(c)(3) organization, which is designed solely to collect funds, do fundraising, to build our endowment funds. We have a perpetual care fund. This would be to get other funds that would be there for endowment purposes and to help raise funds for operations. The difference being is that there's no restrictions then on the ability to tap into private foundations and bequest when people die. That's the purpose of that. So the IRS for a number of years had, when people tried to establish these support foundations, would just really look at it and collapse it back down and say, this is just the extension of the cemetery, so you're still a 501(c)(13). They've now since loosened those rules up, allowed us, and just about six months ago then, we did have approval, so we now have this established. The transition between the state and the city that we knew coming, kind of tied our hands on how we go about and go to the community and tell them, you now have this opportunity to help us now that after tonight, it's kind of an open, open game now that we can start utilizing that. So again, as Mike explained, our purpose is to use it really as a fundraiser to help develop funds.
I, those answered my question. My just comment is citizens and neighbors have been concerned of this conditions of the cemetery and the decline of it. And I'm hoping that we can help you guys get, get back on stable footing, shall we?
It's 150 years old this year and so it's worked well, but as Mike said, our, our business model has seen it change in how we develop that. So again, all these opportunities now to open up the door to, to look at developing funding for the cemetery. But anyway, I appreciate your support for it. And I would make a comment that working with Mike and the city staff, Murray and the others, it's, no one wanted to talk about putting an additional financial, uh, obligation on the city, but they've been good to work with, holding us to task, challenging us. The idea of, of selling land, that's going to be a difficult one, but, but we'll at least consider it because we know the times are different, so.
Ms. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Farber.
Can I ask Ken a question?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. The cemetery is also designated as a military cemetery. As you come in and there's that area there that is designated for military, at least for the acknowledgement of it. Are there any federal or state funds relating to that section of the musi, of the museum, of the cemetery?
We do have a designated military section. And yes, there are a number of grants and opportunities out there, which we couldn't have before because again, we were not a 501(c)(3) organization. That now opens up the door to try and look for those areas for additional funding.
Okay. And then because some of us do have family members up there and there is a, some sects up there, religious sects, the Jewish community in particular, has the, the right to have all of their cemetery land to the left as you walk in, based upon Mr. Levy's relationship with the city. Are these or any organization able to donate funds now based on the sections within the cemetery, based on the new 501(c)(3) 13?
I would believe so now because again, the 501(c)(3) designation is, is pretty much an open policy. That's how most nonprofits are organized when they're developed with that. So the 501(c)(13) just tied our hands for that, so it opens up all those different doors to do that then.
Okay. Well, thank you very much because it does need to be preserved and I know that these things are in perpetuity and whatever we can do to help assist in the long term here, I think would be very important. So thank you for all your work. Thank you.
Ms. Resnick.
Thank you. So Mr. Van Milligan, has our planning services, the historical aspects of this cemetery been explored at all by Chris Happ Olson or some others? That might lead to a walking tour of some kind or some other type of thing? Because it's a beautiful historic cemetery. It's, it's amazing. It tells the story of Dubuque from the very beginning. And so it's, it's a wonderful place to visit as a historical spot as well. So have we explored the history and maybe done some work for our citizens? Because it, I, I really encourage our citizens to go and, and visit Lynwood. It's just amazing what you can learn about, you know, Dubuque's history and, and some of the early folks that made things work.
Yeah, so I don't believe so and maybe Ken will be able to correct me, but it's not that it's not something we could do. But I know the Cemetery Association has done it because I've been to some of their events and some of their, at one event, they had the, pretty sure it was the Iowa Supreme Court Chief Justice was the speaker, if I remember correctly. But yeah, so I've been to historic events there to talk about the history of the people buried there. But I don't know if, I don't think we've done anything like that.
We, Lynwood Cemetery has in the past collaborated with different organizations to do walkthroughs. Several years ago, we collaborated with the River Museum and we did a, we have, we had characters dressed up, were people that are buried there and we went through and they told a little bit of the history. It is amazing of who is interned there at, at Lynwood. There are people that are real characters. There are people there that are, would make people raise their eyebrow, but they're all part of our history. It's very unique. It's very unique. So we have started the process to redesign some of that information and get it out there, and we are exploring ways to bring that information there. So we've done it in the past, we just have to keep working toward those things to see what we can do.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones. We have had some pretty neat things happen at the cemetery recently. I was at a ceremony, I think it was the Sons of Union Veterans of the Civil War, that took it upon themselves to, in some cases, excavate and find, and then reset and clean, and in a couple of cases, replace markers of Dubuque Civil War soldiers that were lost. And if you get up there to the, about three quarters of the way up the hill, it looks spectacular. Didn't look so spectacular four or five years ago. There's an awful lot of knee work with small brushes scrubbing away on it. And I, I, I was up there over the weekend with some family members and, and just generally impressed with the place. It's such a, such an extraordinarily beautiful cemetery. And I know you're a little behind in some of the maintenance issues, but not too many. It was mowed, it was cleaned, it was tidy, and glad that we can partner to, to keep things going for you. I got a great idea for what we could have done 20 years ago, but we can't do it now.
We'll work on the potholes, but other than that, things are looking pretty good. So anyway, I do appreciate the staff working with us and, again, holding us to task on how we make the dollars stretch to meet those needs. And, and the staff that we have is, they, they, they work well for Lynwood and are very careful with how they do things, so.
All right. Well, first of all, Ken, thank you, before you go, thank you very much for, for working with the city in this and to the entire board there at Lynwood. Appreciate hearing that the work generally has gone well and there's a collaborative nature. I hope we can continue with that for sure. So thank you very much, and thanks for the information tonight, it was helpful. I have one more question that's not answered yet, Mike, the township question. So who, who makes this decision? Is it the county or is it the state of Iowa? Who decides how a township can be formed?
So we're going to let City Attorney Karen Abramwell try to answer that question.
Sure.
Townships are created and disassembled by the County Board of Supervisors, so we will be working with the supervisors related to this request.
Okay. All right. And I'm, they're aware of this, obviously, already?
Yes.
I mean, they are, they are now. We're having a public meeting.
And, and I have talked with them about it previously.
Okay. Great. Well, I hope that the collaboration can continue across the board on this. You know, it's a difficult situation when something like this happens. As you said, now we are in a position where the general fund is what pays for this from a city perspective, but obviously, that's not the ideal and not what we would have as an end goal. So I'm glad to see that we are making progress as much as possible. I'm really happy to hear about the 501(c)(3) capabilities. I think that it opens a whole new door, as Mr. Miller said. So looking forward to being able to move forward here in a positive direction. Okay. Well, motion here on the table is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, recommendation for naming South Point subdivision park.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second. Motion by Russell, second by Jones, mic please.
Thank you. On June 16th, 2025, Communication Specialist Kristen Hill created and released a press release for the naming of South Point subdivision park. An online form for submission was used, and paper copies were available at the Multicultural Family Center. The city's social media outlets were used to promote the naming. Submission process was opened from June 16th through July 16th, 2025. Twenty-three online forms were submitted for the South Point subdivision park naming. All submissions were eligible per the park naming policy. This information was provided to the Parks and Recreation Commission for their consideration at their August 12th, 2025 meeting. The commission unanimously agreed to recommend naming South Point subdivision park to be South Point Park.
Thank you, Mike. Well, as always, thank you to the Parks and Recreation Commission for their work on this, and to the Parks and Recreation staff as well. We appreciate them taking a look at this, and also appreciate the community feedback that we received on what the naming possibilities might be. We've had a lot of active naming possibilities lately. It just seems like we have parks popping up everywhere, which is great to see. I know they're a major asset to neighborhoods, for sure. And I for one agree with this name. Any other discussion or questions? Okay. Well, motion here is to receive and file and approve of this recommendation. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is letters of support for application to IEDA for redevelopment tax credits.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel, mic please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council approve the submission of the attached letters supporting the aforementioned applications for Iowa redevelopment tax credits, confirming the city's recognition that the properties are eligible for the tax credit based on the state's definition of a brownfield. The letter confirms the city's recognition that the properties meet the state's definition of a brownfield and that their redevelopment benefits the community. The following projects have requested a letter of support from the city to accompany their applications. The first is Wilson House at 1243 Locust Street, and the second is Ioka Building at 100 East First Street. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number seven is authorizing contract 25-CTBF-06 by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the rehabilitation of 1701 Central Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second. Motion by Jones, second by Resnick, mic please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council approval of a resolution authorizing a contract by and between the City of Dubuque and the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the rehabilitation of 1701 Central Avenue. The Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Catalyst Building Remediation Grant Program assists communities with the redevelopment or rehabilit, excuse me, rehabilitation of buildings to stimulate economic growth or reinvestment in the community. For the Iowa Economic Development Authority program, the city must be the applicant and provide financial or in-kind resources. Adam Vogel Building LLC, which is the developer, is the current building owner of 1701 Central Avenue. The developer intends to redevelop the property and approach city staff expressing interest in applying for the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Catalyst Building Remediation Grant Program. To assist the project, city staff applied for the program as well as drafting a development agreement, committing city incentives. The city has been informed that the project has been selected for a $100,000 award from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. In order to receive the funds that pass through to the project by reimbursing eligible costs, the city must enter into a contract with the Iowa Economic Development Authority and that contract is attached. The rehabilitation of 1701 Central Avenue improvements include updating all mechanicals to meet code and capacity, removing asbestos in the flooring and walls, roof and masonry repairs, restoration of the historic facade as outlined by the State Historic Preservation Office, rehabilitation of four uninhabitable residential rental units, creation of a new fifth residential rental unit on the ground floor at the rear of the structure, restoration of commercial space on the first floor, installation of a security system and outside lighting. In addition to the Iowa Economic Development Authority grant, the project would be eligible for city incentives, a rehabilitation grant of $35,000 maximum, and the housing creation grant at $50,000 maximum, which staff anticipate bringing to the city council for review in September as part of a development agreement. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Questions or discussion? Ms. Russell.
I'd just like to say that I'm excited to see another building on Central Avenue getting a, a new life and, and bringing a great, new beauty to that area. So thank you for those that are taking part in that.
Thanks, Ms. Russell. Ms. Resnick.
Thank you very much. I also want to concur with Laura, and I want to say that, you know, this, this is not taking place in a vacuum, because that whole Central Avenue area is building momentum. And I drove by there a couple times today, and, you know, you can see the signs in the windows, letting people know that, you know, you can build your future here, your future business in these buildings. And there is a commitment by this council, and there is a commitment by our partners to really make that area a success. And so I'm excited to see this part, but we're, there's a whole lot going on, as mentioned by Rick Dickinson earlier, and many other people are working on this. So thank you to all our partners, and let's keep moving on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Resnick. Yeah, well, please, Ms. Brink.
I just wanted to comment that reactivation like this cannot happen by only the City of Dubuque, but it takes participation from so many partners. I'm grateful for this and so much activation and reactivation of properties on Central, and I just hope the momentum keeps building. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'll just mention, you know, as a, as a member of the Dubuque Initiatives Board, the mayor serves on that as well as several members of the council, so Ms. Farber, Mr. Resnick join us there, Mike is there for those discussions too. And, you know, the, the fact that Dubuque Initiatives as a partner has been able to work with developers to really focus on the 17 and 1800 block of Central Avenue, to be able to have some sort of a catalytic type of movement and start in getting these things going so that we can see some more development like this, I think has been a real game changer in this. And it's great to see a partnership like that develop. There are multiple different developers involved, multiple different businesses on commercial floor spaces. Our Economic Development Department, I know Jill Connors is here, there's a ton of work on this as well. So really glad to see all of this moving forward. And, you know, as Mr. Dickinson said earlier, the buildings like this one are really challenging. 1701 is a really challenging building, and there's a lot of challenging older buildings like this along Central Avenue, but the possibilities are kind of endless. I mean, we really do have an opportunity here, and there are many opportunities to be able to develop some of these very old and challenging spaces. So I'm glad to see this one going, and glad for people stepping up to be able to do this work. I think it's, it's going to be important. So we need the partnership as well of the Iowa Economic Development Authority, and happy that we're moving this forward tonight. All right. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number eight is Dubuque selected to join Economic Mobility and Opportunity Special Assistant Program.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell, second by Wethel, mic please.
Thank you. Director of Economic Mobility and Neighborhood Support, Anderson Sancy, is recommending city council approval to participate in the International City County Management Association Economic Mobility and Opportunity Special Assistant Program. The city Dubuque participation in the program includes hiring a temporary economic mobility special assistant position for approximately two years. The economic mobility special assistant will help advance the city of Dubuque local efforts around economic mobility. The International City County Management Association will cover the economic mobility special assistant travel expenses to attend International City County Management Association training, coaching, and other professional development, and funding to update, and funding to update the Equitable Poverty Reduction and Prevention Plan created in 2021 to align with new state and federal guidelines and the National Economic Mobility Framework created by the Urban Institute. While the International City County Management Association will cover salary and professional development, the city Dubuque is responsible for covering health and employee benefits, which is a total of $29,894 in year one. To fund the economic mobility special assistance benefits in year one, savings from the fiscal year 26 property insurance premium will be used. In fiscal year 25, property insurance premium was $1,22,375.50. In fiscal year 26, property insurance budget was $1,179,348. The fiscal year 26 actual premium is $1,097,994.74, which is $81,353.26 less than budget. The city lower premium is due to stabilization in the property markets, which has kept the city's renewal with Chubb at less than an 8% increase. Year two employee benefit cost would be included in the fiscal year 2027 budget. The economic mobility special assistant will assist in developing new strategies, policies, or programs around key areas, including affordable housing, small business, and workforce development, and access to public transportation. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. What a cool opportunity this is. I'm, I'm really excited to see this. This is, this is really great. And the fact that it's, I mean, we have this opportunity to be able to fund this position through another source and not necessarily just do this ourselves and do it at this time is, I'm really excited about this one. Ms. Resnick.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Sancy if he wouldn't mind come up and, and talk to us about this a little bit. The memo talks about what economic mobility is. Specifically, the objectives are, you know, high, high objectives, and I was wondering if this might have, would we be able to reach out and help senior citizens as well as our, you know, it seems kind of like for, for the working folks, but how about for senior citizens? And what can they perhaps get from this program in the future as you develop it?
Yeah, so Anderson Sancy, Director of the Economic Mobility and Neighborhood Support, great question. So if you remember, poverty impacts everyone, not just the working class. And so we're super excited to partner with the Bill Gates and ICMA Foundation to look at poverty from a holistic level. And so it will address the individuals you're talking about as, as well. We'll be doing a lot of outreach. If you remember when we first did the Poverty Prevention Plan, it was really boots on the ground, getting out in the community, understand the real stories, understanding what national frameworks are telling us as well, and bringing it back to the local level. And so that's what we're trying to, to do again, and really address some of the things you've heard probably from a few residents, like, hey, what are those clear things you guys are doing right now to address poverty? And you're, you're going to start to see a, a lot more that, again, as the city manager mentioned, that aligns with some of the newest best practice that are out there.
Thank you. And sometimes, you know, people have worked very hard and they're still, and they still go through hard times, right, as senior citizens. Sometimes they're reticent to join these type of things and take care of these, you know, take advantage of these opportunities. What kind of, you know, you're going to, how are you going to be reaching out to, to folks?
Yeah, we, we truly believe in meeting people where they're at, so we're not going to put something in the flyers and say, come to us. You know, once we get this person, it's really about being strategic and going out where people are at, having some clear questions that we want to ask them, and to also consider various policies that we can bring before you, for you guys to make that decision from a systemic level. And so we're looking forward to doing boots on the ground outreach, getting out to community members, which again, is, is critical to who we are, right? We have a community engagement person who's designed to be out in the community. We have leaders that are strategically building relationships with policymakers, so that's all a part of who we are.
So you have, so your group, department is going to be integrated with this new, are they actually part of your department now for a couple of years?
So the, the, the person that we will get, we don't have them yet, you'll, you'll have to approve it first, then we'll enter into a contract with ICMA, and then there's another process of actually working with them to hire a, a person to come in. But I do want to assure you, right now, we're already interacting with a variety of neighborhood association groups, so that's just part of who we are, and we'll continue to do that.
Great. Thank you for those answers.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Discussion? All right. Anderson, thank you very much for being here. All right, Anderson, thank you very much for being here and for those questions. Okay, motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number nine is Civil Service List and Procedure Change for Police and Fire.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Farber.
Second by Jones, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief of Police Jeremy Jensen and Fire Chief Amy Scheller are recommending city council adopt the change to forego the civil service approval process under Iowa Code 400.12A and authorize the creation of a police officer hiring eligibility list of up to 40 police officer candidates and a firefighter eligibility list of up to 40 firefighter candidates, which is outside the Civil Service Commission approval. This approval will be from the time of adoption until January 5, 2026, when the city council will be presented with the request to establish the 2026 list. The recommendation was presented to the Civil Service Commission on August 13, 2025. The commission was in agreement the current process, and the commission process was a mere formality due to the hiring requirements already in place. The commissioners did ask for frequent reports as to the hiring process, number of candidates, and number of hires. This will be provided at the monthly Civil Service Commission meeting. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion?
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
So, I really appreciate the flexibility here and the opportunity to improve the hiring process and show some flexibility to get some talent and to keep the talent pool or the funnel of the talent pool consistent here and more open for the city. So, it really does create some openings for some eligibility. So, I'm very pleased to support this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, this is a no-brainer, at least for us. It took some thinking to get it here, and I appreciate that. With all the challenges that we've had in filling these positions, our own red tape shouldn't be one of them. So, here's an opportunity to remove some of that.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Wethel.
I just wanted to concur and say I'm really grateful to staff for taking the time to put this forward. We know that we are in a significant need for those that work in public safety to protect and care for our community, and whatever we can do to move that process forward in an efficient way so that, in, I think, deeper in the staff memo, just the idea that we potentially are losing candidates because of days and taking a process that simply changes that outcome. It's so important. We don't want to miss an opportunity for a good candidate, and I think this is going to put us a leg up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Why do we do it the way we do it now? I guess I've never asked that question before. I mean, why do we have this list that we then, that has then slowed us down in this way? If there's anybody that can answer the history of that question.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Chief Jensen.
Yeah, please, go ahead, chief.
This is a recent change to the civil service law in the last couple of years. Prior to that, it did not have this as an option. And one of the things we did is kind of look at it to see how it played out and see if it got challenged anywhere, and it did not. So, that's why we're pushing it forward.
Well, that is a pretty solid answer, chief. It makes a lot of sense. So, it does, it does bring another question to mind, though. Are there any other ways that we are standing in our own way as a city with, as Mr. Jones pointed out, red tape in this process, that we could explore changing right now, or we could advocate for changes? I mean, this was a state law change that is very helpful, hopefully, in helping us to make this more efficient. Are there any other ways that, you know, right off the top of your head that we could think about, or I'll leave it at that?
Yeah, right now, no. I mean, this is the change that we can do. We explored, if there was a change that could streamline it, for sure, we'd bring it to you on this. As we move forward and some things at the state level, as we see some of the hiring practices, and I know that's a lot of discussion across the state, so to look at that and what barriers are there while still maintaining quality and high-quality candidates is important.
And, Mr. Mayor, we do include in our legislative priorities some information on the civil service process.
Okay, thank you, Krena. Chief Scheller, I know you're sitting here. Is the answer pretty much the same for the fire department at this point? Yeah, you're shaking your head yes. Okay. Yep. Okay. Well, good. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Well, that's great. Yeah, this is a no-brainer indeed. Anything we can do to try and move this process along, make it more efficient, get people on the job more quickly, in training more quickly to be able to do this. It's fantastic that we get to make this choice tonight. Okay, motion here is to receive and file and approve of this change. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number 10 is Proceedings to Complete Action for the Issuance of $1,941,000 Taxable Water Revenue Bonds Series 2025 State Revolving Loan Fund Program, Private Lead Service Line Replacement Pilot Program Phase One.
Mr. Sprank.
Motion to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is recommending city council approval of the suggested proceedings to complete action required for the $1,941,000 taxable water revenue bonds series 2025 State Revolving Loan Fund Program, Private Lead Service Line Replacement Pilot Program Phase One, prepared by bond counsel, and to present a resolution for city council to adopt entitled Series Resolution Authorizing and Approving a Loan and Dispersion Agreement and Providing for the Issuance of $1,941,000 Taxable Water Revenue Bonds Series 2025 and Other Documents Related to the Series 2025 Bonds and Amending Certain Provisions. The city of Dubuque is taking part in a unique opportunity to assist approximately 585 homes in three phases, owner-occupied or rented homes within the city with the functional replacement of private lead water service lines by trenching or pull-through methods to prevent the potential for drinking water contamination at a house-by-house level. This phase of the pilot program is 100% voluntary and is open to those residents with a verified drinking water lead service line meeting the socioeconomic guidelines established by the bipartisan infrastructure law. The scope of work in first phase includes the replacement of approximately 200 lead service lines identified throughout the city's water distribution service area. The nature of the replacements will vary by site, ranging from full replacements, public water main to interior plumbing, to partial replacements, a portion of the service line between the public water main and the interior plumbing. Work will be conducted within the city's right-of-way and on private properties with authorization from property owners. The city is moving forward with this unique opportunity and has secured a level of bipartisan infrastructure law funding to conduct the first of its kind in the community, Lead Service Line Replacement Pilot Program. The bipartisan infrastructure law funds are being administered locally through the Iowa Department of Natural Resources State Revolving Fund or Iowa SRF program, with 49% of construction costs being forgivable. The state revolving fund loan will have an interest rate of 0%, a maturity date of June 1, 2045, and will be abated from the water fund. At the completion of the project, 49% of the principal balance will be forgiven by the Iowa Finance Authority. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If folks are wondering why Jackson Street's all torn up in the North End, this is why. This is what's going on. Folks are going to get their lead service lines replaced. I know I'll be experiencing this soon at my own home, so I'm just grateful that this is moving forward. So, thank you.
Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So, Mr. Van Milligan, how do they know, you said they need a verified drinking water lead service. Who verifies that? I was at a home that had one of these lead services, but I, I mean, I wasn't sure because of when, you know, because of the chemicals that we have in our water, you know, it doesn't really, it didn't really affect us. But how do they verify that?
So, we have an inventory of all the lines. I'm trying to remember that's, matter of fact, the state was extremely impressed that when this program started and they offered it for the cities across the state, I think we might, we might have been the only one. If not, we were one of the few that had an existing inventory of lead service lines.
So, you can call, I believe one, it was part of the GIS program, in fact, that she might have mapped it all out as one of the many different things that she does. But in order to, you can verify just by calling the city, who would they call?
Yeah, so they can call the water department, and they can find out whether they have a lead service line or not. And I don't know if, is Chris Lester, are you on virtually? No. But if there's any doubt, we can inspect to verify.
Okay, but don't let that hold you back because, I mean, you know, you can verify, they don't have to know right now if they have a lead service line.
No.
They can call and find out.
Right.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
Yeah, Mike, could you just explain for those listening what the difference would be for the taxable water revenue bonds versus the 49% that is forgivable loan?
Yeah, so, so this program, which is, you know, federally funded program, every state was offered an opportunity to present this program. And so, the state of Iowa thankfully opted in to doing this program. And the way it works is the federal money goes to the Iowa Finance Authority, and then they offered it to cities to compete for the money. And the program is that while we will borrow 100% of the cost of the program, the 49% of the loan will be forgiven, so we won't have to pay it back at all. And then, the 51% of the loan is a 0% interest. So, it's pretty attractive.
And then, the payback is by 2045?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's paid, it's paid by our water bill funds.
Understood.
So, it's one of our enterprise funds, so there's no property taxes involved in this project.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number 11 is Iowa Department of Natural Resources Proposed Administrative Consent Order.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Wethel.
Second by Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Water and Resource Recovery Center Director Darren Mearing is providing information related to the recommended administrative consent order received from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources that pertains to self-reported, so these are violations that we reported to the DNR, self-reported affluent permit violations between January 1, 2020 and December 31, 2024 at the Water and Resource Recovery Center. The Water and Resource Recovery Center is the city's wastewater treatment facility, which holds a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES, permit from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, which authorizes the discharge of treated wastewater into the Mississippi River. The permit requires the city to meet more than 2,000 individual permit conditions at the Water and Resource Recovery Center each year, including sampling, monitoring, and discharge limits to ensure the water returned to the environment is safe and meets requirements. A total of 72 permit violations were self-reported by the city over a five-year period, with the majority occurring in 2023 and 2024 during periods of facility disruption. The violations stem from two main causes, both of which have been addressed. One is biological instability in the treatment process beginning in 2022. This condition has been stabilized for more than a year through enhanced monitoring, targeted treatment, and modified process controls. Number two, a contractor error in fall of 2023 rendered the facility's boiler inoperable for several weeks. This led to loss of digestion performance and resulted in 33 violations. An explosion at the facility in December 2024 related to a third-party equipment, not city infrastructure, damaged systems and contributed to additional permit violations. The contractor error in 2023 and third-party equipment malfunction in 2024 caused or contributed to 40 permit violations. The Iowa Department of Natural Resources Proposed Administrative Consent Order and Limited Levy of $7,000 in Total Administrative Penalties acknowledges the challenges and opportunities the Water and Resource Recovery system has faced since 2023, as well as ongoing work and funding the city has dedicated to its sanitary sewer collection system. Through the first half of 2025, the Water and Resource Recovery Center has had only seven permit violations, all tied to a single day when sampling levels were elevated, which was directly related to the December 2024 explosion, not ongoing process issues. The city has been actively working to reduce and minimize violations through operational improvements, added staffing, and long-term planning. The city also started early work on developing a facility plan updated for the Water and Resource Recovery Center to guide the next 20 to 30 years of treatment capacity, reliability, and odor control. Within the last two years, the city has added a plant manager and an industrial pre-treatment coordinator to the Water and Resource Recovery Center's staff to improve systems oversight and control over what enters the facility. Both roles have helped identify and manage issues that cause permit issues. Additional investments to improve operations at the Water and Resource Recovery Center are planned. A $7.3 million project to improve hauled high-strength waste is budgeted and under design and will be ready for bidding in 2025. These improvements will be funded through fees charged to the hauled waste generators and customers. Federal funding sources are being pursued to help reduce costs to these local businesses. Also, later this summer, the city will go out for bid on the first phase of a $3 million project to replace electrical controls at the Water and Resource Recovery Center, to replace existing infrastructure and prevent system failures. The city has committed over $134 million in sanitary sewer collection and treatment system improvements through fiscal year 2030. This includes the $43.4 million Phase 1 and 2 of the Old Mill Road lift station in Force Main project that is already under construction. These targeted investments in the sanitary sewer collection system will reduce backups, eliminate bypasses, and support future growth. Improvements include upgrades to lift stations, force mains, and key segments of the citywide gravity sewer network. Overall, the Water and Resource Recovery Center has generally operated in conformity with its NPDES permit, and the permit violations that have occurred were primarily the results of specific identifiable events rather than systemic deficiencies. The city has responded to the incidents by addressing root causes and has also taken proactive steps to prevent future violations, both by mitigating the risk of unusual disruptions and by strengthening systems to guard against broader systemic issues. The consent decree says, and I quote, "Iowa Code Section 455B.109 authorizes the commission to establish by rule a schedule of administrative penalties up to $10,000 that may be assessed administratively." The consent decree further says, and I quote, "Iowa Code Section 455B.191 provides for While the Iowa Department of Natural Resources had the authority to assess higher penalties, the consent decree reads, and I quote, "The city shall pay an administrative penalty of $7,000 within 30 days of the effective date of this order," close quote. I respectfully recommend mayor and city council approval of the administrative consent decree.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a presentation from Darren, too?
Yep. Evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. I'm Darren Mirring, Water and Resource Recovery Center Director. And I hope to just provide a little context, understanding of these permit violations and more, a little more detail, depth of what we've been doing to address issues like this. So first, I just want to start off, real basic stuff, but a couple of key points here. I mean, at the Water and Resource Recovery Center, we basically handle wastewater generated in our community and even extending outside of our community into the county, even into Illinois, even Wisconsin, we accept hauled waste. And, you know, so part of this is that hauled waste is also, like our restaurants produce fat soils and grease, so that's part of this, this hauled waste that we receive. And if we don't receive it, I don't know where they would have to take it. You know, if you open most textbooks on wastewater treatment facilities, they will say, do not take fat soils and grease. We can because our anaerobic digestion can accommodate that way. So that's why we started to do it and provide that service for local restaurants, the 220 or so restaurants in Dubuque and even outside of our community. And then even the, the high-strength hauled waste. So some of these facilities, they actually have their own industrial pre-treatment system because if they can't, the waste that they produce would be problematic to go down our collection system. So they have this at their own expense, they create an industrial pre-treatment system, and they remove that from the waste so they can discharge to our sewer. Well, then they still have to deal with that waste. And so we, they have to haul it to our facility. But again, if we don't take it, they would have to haul it, you know, hundreds of miles or, yeah, 90 miles wherever away to try and find some other place to take that waste. So, so it's a very important service that we provide for, again, our community and surrounding tri-state area. And then, of course, we, we take it and we are regulated by the NPDES permit that the city manager mentioned. And it's regulated and we get oversight from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. And so, and as we mentioned, that, that oversight, there's over like 2,000 individual permit conditions that we could violate on any given year. And so I just wanted to accomplish tonight, you know, obviously why we're here is that Iowa Department of Natural Resources issued this proposed administrative consent order back in May. And I do want to say that we really appreciate working with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. They are a great partner, even though they're our regulator. We, we work with them on all kinds of issues and even on this level. You know, they help us understand our permit requirements, and they also help provide guidance on ways we can better meet those permit requirements. And just this example, this administrative consent order is another great example of a back and forth of working with them, you know, on these 72 self-reported effluent permit violations and understanding why they happened. And, and again, you know, what we're doing to move forward to address those and prevent those from happening. So just to start out, too, effluent, these are effluent permit violations. So effluent is the water that is discharged from a facility. So all the wastewater comes in, it moves to the treatment process, and then it's discharged into the Mississippi, and that discharge is called the effluent. And so really what this represents is the water that's been treated, there are certain parameters set by the, by our permit that has some limitations on them. And these effluent parameters, some of them have multiple metrics as far as what actually gets measured. So for example, total suspended solids, we have to meet a seven-day concentration, a seven-day, you know, pounds, and a 30-day average concentration, a 30-day total pound. So I'll get a little more of that, but I'm just saying that just because we have elevated total suspended solids, it can be multiple permit violations. Now, dig into that a little bit here. Just putting these numbers in context, you know, the 72 permits are about 1% of our, the total compliance checks over a five-year period. Most of those were in '22, started in 2022 and then through '24. And again, not really related, or not related to systematic operational failure, they were related to specific instances that we then had to address and have addressed. Just to, and then how, how these effluent permit things are all connected. So as I mentioned, one of the things that our facility is, we're really doing is we're separating solids from liquids. And so as the wastewater moves to our facility, goes to the primary clarifiers, solids, a certain amount of solids will settle out, and that gets diverted to the digester for further treatment. Then the wastewater passes on to the activated sludge process where there's more bacteria and solids there, and that consumes these solids, makes more solids, and then we waste or remove a certain amount of those solids again from there on a daily basis and send it to the digesters. Then that then flows to the final clarifiers where, again, further solids get settled out and then get removed and get sent to the anaerobic digesters. So the issue is if we have elevated solids in the system, if too much passes through the system, then that can lead to the, obviously, higher total suspended solids. If there are higher total suspended solids, that's also going to mean that we have higher carbonaceous BOD demand, and so it'll lead to some of those permit violations. And if we have higher total suspended solids, that's, you know, suspended solids prevent UV from penetrating the water, it kind of, you know, fractures or scatters the light, doesn't allow the UV light to disinfect like it should. And so that leads to, to UV issues or E. coli exceedance where we're not knocking those, those numbers down like we're supposed to. So again, one root cause can be multiple permit violations. So for example, the 72 permit numbers doesn't mean that 72 times we did something wrong or 72 times we, you know, we failed at 72 unique things. And so just to get into the specific issues that led to the bulk of, of these violations, really in 2021, 2020, 21, we had a total of nine. We had two in 2020 and seven in 2021, just isolated issues. And then later in 2022, filamentous bacteria emerged, and then in late, in the fall of '23, the boiler outage. And again, those two highlighted there led to the vast majority of the 72 violations that we had over the last five years. And then in 2024, still within that period, there was an explosion caused by third-party equipment that, that also led to some permit violations that I'll talk about. So filamentous bacteria, just real quick, is present in all wastewater. In our, they thrive usually in low-strength waste. They're really good at kind of boxing out or holding the good bacteria. We use bacteria to break down and get rid of waste, and the filamentous bacteria does that as well. But they're really good at, like I said, when there's food there, they're better at it getting that food than the, than the other bacteria. And the issue with filamentous bacteria is they don't settle out very well. And so if, if they pass through, they're again gonna, they don't settle out, so then there are more of it's going to pass through into the effluent, which, which will result in higher total suspended solids, which will reduce our ability for the UV to work effectively. And so what we did and have implemented is controlled through, first, we had to identify the species. We had to figure out, okay, what's the best way to kind of reduce and minimize these bacteria and prevent that from happening? And we've had that process in control. We, monthly, we'd send samples off. So for example, just this summer, we had to stop, we had to step up our chlorination again to knock that population down so that it didn't cause any violations this summer. The boiler outage was just, we were proactively, you know, we have to schedule this boiler to make, make sure that it's going to operate safely. That requires a state inspection that, which, to do that, we have to open the boiler up. So it's this big, huge metal container, and you literally have to open up one side of it to be able to look inside or where the actual fire goes or the, you know, the heating happens. But to do that, you have to undo a bunch of wires so you can actually open this up, and you have to close it back up and then rewire it all up. Well, the contractor we had hired to do that had, when they rewired it, they, their one wire didn't get connected entirely, and so it came off. And it took us quite a while to figure out what the cause was. They couldn't figure it out. So ultimately, we left it three weeks, our boiler was offline. And so while that's happening, our digesters are losing their temperature and going down and down. And once they get to a certain elevation, their effectiveness, they just can't handle the solids like they should be able to. And so again, that leads to solids building up in the system and more solids going out with the effluent, which then leads to those violations we talked about. And then in December of '24, we had an explosion. Again, affected the solids handling system. So for 10 days, we were without, were without power. It took us that while to make sure we systematically went through to make sure we could turn the systems back on. But during that time, we usually produce about 100,000 to 110,000 gallons of solids in the system. So that activated sludge process, they're, they're eating bacteria, but they're also reproducing, and that's that 110,000 that we have to waste every day to maintain our solids level. So over a 10-day period, that's over a million gallons of solids that accumulated in our system. And so what we tried to do to avoid any permit violations is we, we temporarily stored that waste in an excess flow tank so that it wouldn't go out and create an effluent violation. But what had ended up happening is in April, our system, we thought we were ready to start entering that back into the system to process that waste that we had temporarily stored. And the one day, we let out too much. So one day led to these seven permit violations. So, and here's the individual, well, violations like I talked about. So total suspended solids, seven-day concentration, so milligrams per liter exceeded that. Total suspended solids, same pollutant, but now it's the total pounds we exceeded that. And then actually made us violate the monthly concentration as well. And then CBOD, same thing. We violated the concentration exceedance, the pounds exceedance, the monthly, and then actually the monthly pounds of exceedance of CBOD. So, so again, one day, we, we tried to start working that waste back into the system, and it caused these violations. So obviously, we backed off, and we have since gotten rid of and processed all that waste without any further permit violations. In fact, you know, it's been, it's almost, to date, we have only had those seven effluent permit violations at the plant. So, and just want to point out that, that, you know, some of these limits are far below effluent or environmental thresholds for safety. You know, not every exceedance means we're harming the river or harming the environment. And one example is, so we have an ammonia limit that changes depending on the month. And in July, our limit is 52 milligrams per liter. So in our, in the DNR, when they just reissued our permit back in 2024, they go through the process of trying to determine, okay, how much can the Mississippi River actually accept before there's any harm? And their calculations show that it's like 105 milligrams per liter. But there's a thing that the DNR does is they, I think they call it, there's no backsliding. So they're never gonna increase your permit limit over the year. So they keep it at 52 because that was a limit at some previous permit. So our permit stays at 52, even though they showed that we could, we could discharge it at 105 and still the Mississippi River would be fine with it. So it's just an example, again, of how these, these effluent limit violations, if we violate them, does not necessarily mean that we're, you know, harming the environment. And of course, through this five-year period, the city's been making a lot of changes and doing things. So for example, the city council allowed for adding positions at the, at the facility that resulted in a plant manager. And I like to think of the plant manager as kind of like the doctor who just every day checks on the patients, just to make sure things are okay, catch things before they become a big issue. And we also added the district treatment coordinator. And what, what that position is key of doing is making sure that what we're receiving, monitoring that, tracking that, so that, 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 those pollutants don't force us or cause us to exceed a permit violation. We've also moved into the filamentous control program that I mentioned. And then the city council also allocated funding to proactively clean the digesters to make sure that our, that our digesters function at an optimal level. That unfortunately, we had to delay because of the explosion in December, but we hope to get that out for bid and scheduled for the spring of 2026. And then other capital investments underway that were mentioned, 7.3 million for a high-strength receiving and storage, 3 million in electric control upgrades. So those are our facility that'll help us manage the waste better than we, than we can today and make sure that our system runs reliably. And then, of course, we also have the collection system improvements, the 43 million in Old Mill Road, and 130 million or so committed through 2030 for all sanitary sewer improvements. And again, performance to date, we've only hit a seven effluent permit violations so far in 2025, all from that one day in April and no other effluent limit exceedances. And what the administrative consent order means is, again, you know, the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, they are a regulator, and it's their job to make sure we're doing what, what we're supposed to do. Again, they acknowledge that most of these permit affluent, these affluent permit violations were caused by exceptional incidents. But setting that aside, we're still responsible for meeting those permit limits, whether we have exceptional limits or incidents or not. But that, but the, but the administrative consent order recognizes that. And then it really just brings closure to the last five years, kind of closes that book, and now we, now we move into the future. And looking ahead, we do have, the city council provided funding to do a facility plan update. Again, to look down the road for 20 to 30 years, what do we need to provide at our Water and Resource Recovery Center to be able to continue to handle the wastewater generated in our communities and meet these permit limits? And we continue to invest in people, systems, and infrastructure. And, you know, investing in people isn't always adding, you know, staff. It can be just adding training, getting them better prepared and better understanding what, what we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. Systems, we're right now considering different computer maintenance, computerized maintenance management systems to help us better look at our maintenance program and have, so that we have more reliability in our system. And then our, our goal is always reliable compliance and protecting the environment. So just closing, I mean, our, the violations were isolated or they were associated with some unique instances that we had to deal with. We've made changes that we, that we've had to address those issues going forward, and some of those changes are already making a difference. And we're always looking for ways to improve what we do at the Water and Resource Recovery Center. We, I should close by saying, we want zero effluent permit violations, and we work every day to do that. So I don't want to make light of, you know, or explain away like these mean nothing. They do mean something to us. You know, the staff that I have a privilege of working with at the Water and Resource Recovery Center really cares. The mission we have is to protect the environment and protect the Mississippi from the waste generated in our community or wastewater. So that's something we, we do every day when we go to work. We, we work to do just that. With that, I'll pause for, end for any questions.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Darren, and thank you, Mike, for the memo that you shared. All right, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
We've been extraordinarily, extraordinarily well-briefed on the situation as it's occurred, and tonight, appreciate the presentation very much. I know that you and the entire team down there kind of take it personally when one of these happens, but I also know that nobody's trying to hide anything, nor have we ever. Historically, the city of Dubuque has always voluntarily and immediately reported any, any irregularities in wastewater handling. It's a, it's a challenge in a city this old to, to be perfect, particularly in the collection system. We've got a fairly modern disposal system at, down at the plant. What, what I guess citizens have to be aware of, everybody has to be aware of is that what makes anaerobic digesters work are a bunch of living things that are fragile. And upsets in chemistry or temperature can, can kill those bugs and eat the other bugs. And, and then we end up with, with issues with the operation of the plant. And I think that we've got experts at our disposal and experts on our staff that work every day to keep those things from happening. And here we are, they happen. I agree with you, the, the idea and ours job is to regulate everybody, and I think they get that these were extraordinary circumstances, that these were beyond our control. But I think that we have to get that their job is to penalize us anyway and slap our wrists and make sure that we're paying attention. And I'm sure that we are. And so I, I think we, I don't want to say proudly pay the fine, but I think we, we shake hands, we pay the, pay the penalty and continue to do the excellent work that we, we do. hands, we pay the, pay the penalty and continue to do the excellent work that we, we do. Couple of these extreme events were caused by others and I, I know litigation is being researched. It's not progressed yet or, or been filed yet. I, I guess I won't comment beyond that, but I do want the citizens to know that we're not ignoring that fact of the, of the situation as well, that our legal team is reviewing the options and will present us with their recommendation what the best ones are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Darren.
Yeah. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thanks for your report. There's a lot there and you've been working very hard. So thank you for all this extra work. It's hard work when everything's working smoothly. So I know that now the two new hires mentioned, they were suggested or required by the state.
So when the EPA did an inspection, I think it was in the fall of 22, they did an inspection specifically layer of industrial program. And one of the things I think in their report, they cited, you know, they questioned basically our staffing levels in that report. So I don't know that was required, but they identified that, you know, as something that would be a benefit to us.
Right. And so we're not guessing about whether or not those are the good hires. My, my second question is, did these violations lead to odor issues and what do you anticipate in this area in the immediate future?
Yes, the, these, the one, the violations, I mean, the violations themselves, when they're happening, don't leave to odor, but these incidents that also resulted in these effluent violations also involve some odor, higher odor levels than normal. So I mentioned, we, we, in order to prevent permit violations due to the explosion, we wasted, you know, some of the solids into the excess flow tank. And we tried to treat that. We, we added chlorine, we tried to knock down odors as best we could, but it's still gonna be, it still produced more odors than normal. And that's, that's the one thing about our facility is that, and our number one priority is adhering to the permit requirements. And so sometimes that has to take a precedence to odor. We just, I mean, the law is we need to follow these permits and, and so sometimes we have to do that. And so they, these incidents did lead to increased odors, but we always, we, we never make those decisions lightly. We're always conscious and we still try to mitigate the odor even when, when these situations arise.
Right. And so, and so we're doing our best to contain the odor. And what do you, if everything goes smoothly, do you anticipate, you know, what do you anticipate for the odor level, let's say for the rest of the summer or? Can you do that? Is it possible to estimate that, you know, the odor level?
Well, we shouldn't have any, I don't know how to characterize it. I mean, the, the one that was caused by the boiler in 23 were just exceptionally strong And then the ones again that happened following the explosion and this, early this spring, they weren't much better, but they were, they weren't quite as odors, but they, but they still were gonna, gonna cause issues, you know, when people are in their neighborhoods and the winds blowing a certain direction. But that's all been taken care of, you know, so right now we, we're solid, we're handling our solids. We don't anticipate using, we're, we do, we, we, our staff, we do not want to put waste in that excess flow tank. We do not, we, we do not take that lightly because, yeah, it's, it's almost like a, a thing of last resort. So to answer your question, the only thing that would be typically right now is the anaerobic digesters can produce an odor and the, for example, the clarifiers can reduce hydrogen sulfide odors. Remember through a city council appropriation in FY 25, we were able to expand our, our dosing, chemical dosing. And so that does mitigate even that. So we are dosing to the primary clarifiers to reduce that, those odor potential. And also we're, we're still kind of in a study, if you will, to figure out how much ferric chloride to dose into the digesters, but we are, have been dosing in there since, since June with ferric to address both odor and also struvite, which is another issue we've been dealing with.
Appreciate the information and, and that we, we have a priority to follow the law and you're doing everything we can. And then we also, I want to tell the citizens, you know, that it's very important to us to minimize the odor. In fact, we increased the budget by, I believe, $500,000 in order specifically to reduce that odor. It's very important to us and we're continuing to work on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Farber.
So following up on Mr. Resnick's comments about odor abatement, and you know, we have had this ongoing conversation for the last four years about the odor abatement. And one thing that I'm very pleased to see is that there's a digester plan, cleaning plan coming up for 2026. And one of the things that has always impressed me about your team and your communication skills is that you're letting the public know and specifically some of our constituents along that court or in particular who probably have you on speed dial. Is it possible to share at the appropriate time and also maybe throughout between now and maybe the spring cleanup, just to let the residents know on the status and so that when there is an occasional odor abatement need, if you will, that they're at least recognizing the fact that indeed the team is stepping up and hearing them and respecting their needs and just communicating with the step by step phases that you're taking?
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
With great appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
Darren, no one can say that you weren't up for a professional challenge when you took your role, but I'm very grateful that you are in your role.
Me too.
Good. Your communication style lends to calming the storm in urgent circumstances. And so thank you for offering your professional skills in your role. I'm very grateful you're there. Thoughts as you went through your presentation, which was incredibly thorough and for some reason, there were some things that clicked for me in a unique way that maybe I was putting pieces together fully now. But, but in, in all transparency, you have openly shared everything with us along the way. You have openly had conversations. I, I've seen the emails with constituents who are upset about odor. You never hide a detail. That's important when we work for the residents of Dubuque and you take that seriously. So thank you. It is so important to acknowledge no one was hurt during that explosion. The day I heard about that, I just, I got dropped as everyone's did that found that out immediately. And, and so whatever we can do to keep our staff, staff safe moving forward, that is so crucial and I know you're taking that top of, top of mind. The plan for the facilities update, I think is really, who knew I'd be excited about facilities updates for a wastewater recovery center, but I am. I'm really looking forward to that because that's about our future and securing our river and making this a great place to live for decades to come. The acknowledgement of the Iowa D N R as our partner and acknowledging that we need to work together with them so that we can do the right thing for our state, for our water, for our environment. The question I have, what was the alternative, if any, to holding the waste as we did?
So after the explosion, we could have just let the increased solids and go out to the river.
But we didn't do that.
Right. Yeah.
And to pay for that, we've had to figure out how to deal with the odor. But I want to say that I'm not grateful that we're in the position that we have been in, but you made the right choice, right? Our staff made the right choice when they had to do that, to do the right thing for the environment. We would have more violations. And so with good intention, our staff is there doing their job. Thank you.
Thanks. Any others? Yeah, Mr. Sprank, go ahead.
Darren, from what I've gathered in all this information, because it's a lot and it's a chemistry set that you basically work with, the discharges, it's not like we were dumping raw sewage. We were dumping treated sewage that just wasn't treated to the best standards. And what we're looking at is standards at milligrams per liter. So I'm just trying to give like the easiest, the easiest way that I can say like, how can like, so say this is like a cup of treated water, we just dumped in two, or sorry, a cup of untreated or not completely treated sewage, we just dumped in two cups. Is that kind of the best way to say it? But I know that's not correct for, because I can't, nowhere did I see like actually how much was actually discharged, so.
Yeah, it's, you know, because you're talking milligrams per liter, it's concentration. And so, you know, and our flow fluctuates, you know, through the month. So for example, this doesn't really get into your question, but to that point, when we had the big rainstorms recently, we haven't had any permit violations. Our system was able to accommodate those flows that went up to say 20 million gallons a day from the normal seven. And so our system is set up to treat that. But it's, you know, in the, in the pounds per day, it's, or it's actually a seven day average. So some days you could have a little higher and some days a little lower because it will fluctuate every day. So even, even that is, plays into it. But yeah, I, I don't have a really great way to quantify, you know, the, you know, what's actually leaving the environment as far as the concentration or, or pounds, but...
Thank you. All right. Well, another good discussion, another good discussion about the Water and Resource Recovery Center. You know, Darren, I didn't do very well in chemistry in high school. It just wasn't my field, you know, and I, I didn't pursue that as a career either. I find it really ironic that I've learned more in the last four years, five years really, because this has been going on, about the chemistry of what happens under our feet to the sewage that we create than, than I ever thought I would learn. And, and I say that not just to be joking about this, I say that because in all seriousness, you have explained this so well to us and to the community and you and your team, I want to say, have explained this so well to us and the community. And, you know, I liked what you said about the fact that this basically is, is closing the book on the last five years. Yet we, we do have to work with our regulators. We do want to make sure that we never have any permit violations. It's pretty uncommon for a city to have zero permit violations in a five year period. Is that true?
That would be accurate.
Yeah. That's just the way that chemistry works. It's the way that the, the, this type of, of work with sewage systems works. In the last five years, my experience about this entire, this entire discussion is that you and your team have been transparent, you've been forthcoming, you've been informative, you've been focused on solutions. You have, the permit violations that we have had have all been addressed, as you pointed out. And now you're planning ahead and we as a council are investing in further solutions down the road. I think we've learned a lot from all this and we, we've definitely made some plans and changes based on what we have learned. So I am highly confident that we are moving in the right direction and we actually have been moving in the right direction for a while now because we've been making these plans over a period of years. So thank you for having another discussion with us about this. I know we had to, you know, given the fact that we are now have the, the consent order, which we will be following and we will be moving forward with and we will be working with the D N R, the EPA and all environmental regulators to make sure that we're doing the best that we possibly can. Thank you very much. And thanks for being here tonight to explain all this to us. Okay. All right. Motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Action item number 12 is Old Mill Road Lift Station Project Update Video.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and view the video.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. One more part of the discussion of our sewage treatment. So please roll the video air.
This did have audio this afternoon.
I think it does, but we aren't hearing it in here. We're working on getting the sound fixed here. It was pretty satisfying to watch cement go back into the truck though.
Eight hundred times that would have had to happen.
Phase one of the $43 million Old Mill Road Lift Station Project just took a major step forward with the pouring of the foundations for the lift station's structure itself. This was a major undertaking as approximately 800 cubic yards of concrete were used to pour the footing. That's equivalent to around 100 concrete trucks. Prior to this massive undertaking, over 160,000 pounds of reinforcing steel rebar was set in place. The evening before the 4:00 AM concrete pour started, city council members held a work session on site to see the progress for themselves. Now that this portion of the project is done, an additional 18 months of work remains before the lift station can be connected to both the existing Catfish Creek interceptor sewers and the new force mains that will connect it with the Water and Resource Recovery Center. When the lift station project is completed by the end of 2026, it will initially be capable of handling 20 million gallons of wastewater per day from the Catfish Creek sanitary sewer shed. The lift station has been designed to make incremental capacity improvements that can increase its capacity to 30 million gallons per day. This additional capacity will facilitate continued growth and development within the sewer shed for years to come.
Excellent. Well, thanks again to our communications department for putting together a great video. Famous voice over there, Eric himself. All right. Motion here was to receive and file, watch that video. Adrian, would you call the roll please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next, our council member reports.
Report time. Mr. Jones.
I won't steal too much of your thunder. I'll let you report on some of these in detail, but Thursday, August 5th, a bunch of us were at the National Night Out at Comiskey. It was a pretty awesome event as always. Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, we hung out with the Washington DC congressional staff who came to visit us. I got to experience something Tuesday that was pretty cool. In fact, extraordinarily cool. As, as you know, Sue and I took a ride on Viking Mississippi this summer and checked out the deep south. So we were invited to a webinar on Viking Mississippi River cruises. By the way, the weather conditions appeared today that they are actually coming north from Hannibal. So they'll be in Dubuque this week, a couple of times the next 10 days. Anyhow, this webinar was with Eust Quendag, Eust as the Vice President of Group Product Development for Viking. At the end of this webinar where they talked about all the attractions along the way and they, they spoke highly of Dubuque during it, he was asked, so what's your favorite port on the Mississippi River? He said, oh, I couldn't possibly, I wouldn't want to do that. Dubuque, Iowa. Plain as could be. And he talked about the National Mississippi River Museum and the St. Luke's Collection of Louis Comfort Tiffin windows being the tipping points for him that, that made him decide that Dubuque was his favorite port. I can tell you from, from being at several of the ports in the Lower Mississippi, pulling into the Port of Dubuque, which we did a couple of years ago on the American Queen Steamboat, is probably the most attractive presentation from the riverside minus the welcome to Dubuque sign. It's, we're going to figure out a way to put up there someday. But almost all the places that we landed in the south was, we were tied up to trees. It wasn't a very formal docking arrangement at all. Of course, it's a big climb to get up over the levees if it's not gated and then back down the other side to, to find the city. So you don't really get to see much on the Lower Mississippi. You get to see a lot up here. Anyhow, we'll look forward to seeing Viking here at their favorite stop in the next couple of days. a producer who's doing a video on an award that the Dubuque Metropolitan Solid Waste Agency is about to get. And I don't know if it's a secret or not. Nobody told me it wasn't, so we'll talk about it a little bit. But this is for our battery recycling program that's really designed to save lives and property. The proliferation of, of small appliances with rechargeable batteries, generally nickel ion batteries, really makes life easier. I've got, got some in here, I've got some in here, I've got some in here, I've got one hanging on my wrist. That's just on my body. I've got almost 50 devices at my home that be planted on those things from lawnmowers to telephones to, to whatever. But at the end of their life, they, they present a pretty good fire hazard. And we've experienced a number of landfill fires because of these batteries turning up in the landfill. Because everything that we do with, with things that we pick up in the garbage truck, crush it, make it smaller, crush it, make it smaller. While you crush those lithium ion batteries and all of a sudden you get some energy, energy discharge and you can get a fire. Now, most of our landfill fires have been, get off the, the dozer, pick up a shovel, scoop it up, put it in a bucket, cover it up with dirt, fire goes out. But some places have fires that last weeks and months to put out. And a landfill is not a dump. It's a multimillion dollar piece of infrastructure. And our refuse collection trucks are tickle and a half million dollars a pop. You really can't afford to burn one of those up because of these batteries. So what's the smart way to do it, the way Dubuque did it? We'll just take all your batteries at no charge at various points around the city that you could drop off. So that was notable enough that the Iowa Association of Solid Waste Organizations is about to give us an award for. So that, that's coming up. This afternoon, speaking of landfill, I was out that way. The, the customer convenience center construction is well underway. The concrete foundations are in the ground. The roads are graded. The road down to it is paved. There's more paving to do. A lot of work happening there. And couldn't help but notice that there's, there's almost a quick start right at Airborne Road in Seifel that we worked on for quite a while. And haven't done this yet, but this Saturday at 1:30, I'm going up to Carnegie Stout Library where retired Iowa State Trooper Bob Hurley is going to talk about his book that he wrote about his years on the state patrol. That has a soft spot in my heart, having worked with a lot of those guys very closely in my years in emergency medical services. So that's what I've been up to and a little bit of what I'm going to be up to.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So when I was first coming to Dubuque in the early 80s, I was told that Dubuque was called the Rome of the Midwest. Seven hills and then so many religious institutions. And, and we recognize that women religious have, have been, have done so much for our residents the last century and a half. So I did, my wife and I celebrated with the Sisters of the Presentation, 150 years of service to our community. And they're still serving, right? They're, the Lantern Center is helping with immigrants to adjust to our country and to, and they have these wonderful water projects across the world. So there's so much going on still. And so I wanted to congratulate again the Sisters of the Presentation on 150 years of, of service to us in this area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor. Yeah, sure. So representing Dubuque is, was part of the topic in tonight's conversation. I once again represented Dubuque with the FCC and the League of Cities Technology Committees, which were held. And in both groups, we're actually creating the advocacy positions and updating some documentation for the government, which will be a multi-month process. So by November, December, we will have some completion to these documents of which we can talk more about and share on behalf of the City of Dubuque. And then I know that you're going to talk about the congressional visits and I, it was my honor to provide a fun half hour with the delegation at the data center and talk about the digital transformation that Dubuque has gone under since 2015. And of course, the, the gem of it all is the data center and shared with my presentation that I shared with the League of Cities and Amazon. So it was just a lot of fun and I look forward to hearing more about what you're going to talk about with the congressional delegation being here. So thank you.
Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Since we met last, of course, many of us came down to National Night Out. It was really nice to see a helicopter land right in the park and then take off at some point. But the children were excited for that. They got to really interact with our law enforcement in a positive way. So that was just a wonderful evening. Not sure how many people were there. I'm estimating 500 to 600 were there, but there could have been more. It was a considerable number of folks there. That following week, I also then, later that week, I also was riding around all day with the congressional staffers on the bus, just chatting with them and going to all the lovely appointments. And you guys met with them much longer. That following weekend, I volunteered again at my labor harvest group and then Crescent, and then also met with Laura with Trees Forever, where we walked Eagle Point Park, where there's some things that we do need to address where we've got a lot of invasive species that we're going to eventually be talking about more here, I assume, when we get back to that lovely park report. And let's see, what else? There's more. Because you never, I have to live by my calendar anymore. And then I know also I swung down, swung by when Crescent had their lovely opening for their new addition, which was, which is nice, their classroom space. And then, of course, there was the Taste of Dubuque. There was the Millwork District. And then I volunteered at the farmer's market one, last, this, this last Saturday and got to talk to all kinds of different folks of the great things that are going on, the things that they want to see going on. And so it was just a really good weekend, all said and all. So thank you.
Ms. Roussel.
Thank you. I was pleased to be part of the Dubuque Main Street accreditation review by Main Street America. Since I'm both a board member and a city council rep, I was really proud to be able to provide a wide perspective of how Dubuque Main Street and the city and so many other organizations work together to promote the health and growth of our downtown. Also wanted to make you aware of a new church that's in town, the Bread of Life Presbyterian Church is, has formed with formerly Westminster and First Presbyterian Churches came together. And so that was very exciting. And so the last thing I did was the forestry walk that Danny talked about. Dubuque Main Street sponsored a couple of foresters, certified arborists, who we walked through Eagle Point Park to just look at the things that we can be really proud of, the things that we have, the revitalization in some of the areas. And then also some of the invasive species that we can, that we can work on. So that was really fun.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel.
I was not able to attend National Night Out because I was at Friends of Mines of Spain board meeting that evening. And I attend there as a participant for our council, just to bring back information. So wanted to share a few things. One is that as we talk about invasive species, in the coming year, we're going to be taking out invasive species from the Mines of Spain. That is an Iowa DNR project. And so if you see that there are trees being removed from Mines of Spain, it's actually invasive species with a goal to eventually replace them with hardwoods. And so it's a, it's a positive experience that we're looking forward to. But if you see that, it will not be probably this summer and fall, but moving into the coming year in 2026. There's a number of changes through the Iowa DNR right now and in the, related to funding constraints. And in the entire state of Iowa, there are now only 16 rangers left. And so I want us in Dubuque to take it upon ourselves to take care of our natural spaces. Because we do not have the resources that we once had to do that. And I take that seriously and I know Dubuqueers do too. Just wanted to share that update.
Thank you. Well, was that a couple of those same things, National Night Out. Also cut the ribbon on English Ridge Park out on the, on the far west side, which was fun. And Vision 2030 had another event, continuing to narrow down the choices for the community on, on what we might focus on for the year 2030. And I really appreciate this process. I've taken a hands-off approach and letting other people make a lot of these decisions. And I really appreciate the, the community input that we're getting there. United Way had a breakfast and made a pretty impassioned plea to, to continue to fund United Way efforts because those efforts then move on to funding other efforts in town. And they continue to do great work, but they do need everyone's help. I also went to the first annual centrally rooted fundraiser that was a concert, and I know Danny was there too. Danny and Chuck were there. And this was really cool. I couldn't stay as long as I would like, but my favorite was Bohemian Rhapsody played with a flute and a clarinet, and then everybody sang along. That you don't get to do very often. So that was a really good time. And then I'll close with the congressional staff visit. So every single year we do this. And I, I know that we all appreciate it very much. We, we're all a part of it in some way or another. And, you know, whether we attend there or have communication with our congressional staffers. And we spend a solid couple of days with all the congressional staff here. And they learn about all the ways in which their partnership and the funding that they are providing from the federal government and from Congress helps Dubuque and helps Dubuqueers. I love being able to show that off and I love the fact that we have that arrangement every single year and such interest from our congressional staff to be able to come and spend time with us. So thank you to all the congressional staffers who are here. Thank you to our members of Congress who send their staff, because I think that's really important too. And I know that we all very much appreciate it. So it was a good, good couple of days. All right. We have a closed session, so I'll entertain a motion, please.
Here, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Council going to closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss pending litigation and purchase or sale of real estate.
Second by Wethel.
By Jones, second by Wethel. For the record, the attorney, the city council, the attorneys the city council will consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session are City Attorney Colonel Brumwell and Senior Counsel Barry Lindahl. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Roussel.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. We are in closed session.